Okay.
All right, motion open the meeting at nineteen thirty hours.
Okay. Need a second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes as he announces. Bills, I have Amy Bedard, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for minutes, three meetings. Cam and Engineering, one thousand three oh three point thirty-three, Homestead Engineering fees.
Okay.
Additional engineering fees. Cam and Engineering, one thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars, twenty-eight cents. Sunset Circle, additional engineering fees. Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I'm gonna just break a minute. Amy Bedard, who's been with us for a number of years now, is gonna be leaving. She's got a full-time job, so at this point, you know, we're gonna have to find somebody to do the minutes, but I think I found somebody. And the second announcement is we have a new planner. Finally, we have a planner. After many, many years of begging for a planner. And Rebecca Oldham down here. So she's came in, what, a week now? Yeah, there you go.
Well, in Groveland.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Do you live in Groveland?
I live in Amesbury.
Amesbury, okay.
Okay. Next is Fairways, assigned a Form G form for the release.
Do we have minutes to approve?
Oh, yeah, geez, I missed that. Yeah. Minutes, five twenty-two eighteen, six nineteen eighteen, and seven twenty-four eighteen. Need a motion and a second.
So motion.
Second.
A second.
Okay.
Okay.
On favor say aye.
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 Okay. Okay, next is the Form G release for Groveland Fairways.
Yeah, what are we doing on that?
Well, town accepted the road, so we gotta close out the...
There was a typo when we went to sign it last time.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Got accepted at town meeting?
Yeah.
Yes. So I got two copies, so I'm just gonna pass them.
Okay. Was it, we weren't holding anything on there, were we?
Yeah, we were like twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight, yes, it's a bond.
It's a bond.
The number that was written on it didn't match what it actually was, so we had to retype it.
Redo it, okay.
One's for them.
Sure.
Adam, are you gonna take that? Okay.
You're gonna bring all the certified copies back so they get to the... Might as well bring back six. It's just the Form G, right?
Yeah.
Can I record this tomorrow?
Yeah, this week.
Hello.
Hello. Sorry I'm late.
Okay.
I'm here.
Yep.
Forgot this one.
Oh, you want some, you got a pen?
Yeah, uh, no, I don't.
No, I don't.
You bought these chairs, we couldn't buy more pens?
Yeah, I know. These are great. You go to the dollar store, you get two of them. These are fantastic.
Seth. Bigger budget.
We got the planner to give me some extra time in my life, you know? That's, that's what we're doing.
Lot of limits, something that says...
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, next up is thirty-eight forty Wood Street. We gotta re-sign a MLR.
Which one's this bill?
They lost it.
The one?
We already signed it.
The one with the multiple... The one we did in the spring, wasn't it?
Um, it's, we started over a year, year and a half ago.
Was this the one we added, we added pages or...
No.
You added a page or something?
No, this was the land swap with the town.
Land swap with the town.
So...
Your town, Forest.
Yeah.
And what this is actually, the plan for the two lots was already signed. It's actually been recorded. This is the town apostle in Westonbury.
You had to go to Westonbury, that's all right.
Yeah, we had to go Westonbury and wanted a couple things added to the plan, so I had to put a revision in.
Yep.
I can tell you what happened, but basically they wanted the Westonbury zoning table, couple of notes they have for split to Westonbury, and that's really all it was. And all of this had changed, because they wanted to show this week Westonbury.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just turn it around and I'll just come by and sign it, okay.
I wanted a copy of, a couple copies of them.
What's the acreage to the town?
Ten acres.
Ten?
Ten point nine.
It's up near the Watertower, the Watertower?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Watertower's here. But the town didn't want the Westonbury pieces, but that are, that's probably an original, if you're wondering about it, it's Westonbury.
All right, so we...
The town, town of Groveland didn't want the Westonbury piece?
Less didn't want it and more couldn't take it, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, wait a minute.
So fine line.
Groveland knowing Westonbury, that's, that's like, oh.
I've gone, Abel's done more than Texas over for years.
Did you fly a motion on this to endorse it?
Yeah, I wanted to.
Okay.
I think we actually...
So motion. Anybody want a second?
Uh, second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 It'll be a long night.
Usual, six copies and a... See another?
Uh, it's just the paper.
Yeah, you know, the recorded one?
Yeah.
And then on the disc or the... If you can get the disc, yeah, that'd be great. We'll just take one of those if you get one paper, that'd be great. Is, is there a Form A with this? Do you have a Form A?
No, we had already done one.
We already did, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jim, who do you get next?
Hold on now.
If we find the Form A, we can stick the lot back there.
All right, seventy-four Bear Hill Road.
Here for a real brief informal discussion on revised layout for seventy-four Bear Hill Road. I wanted to try to get a second lot, have the property. Tried to work out a couple of scenarios, a small cul-de-sac. For, certain class, quicker waivers. We don't have them all listed, but similar to Patochuk, Webster's line around the old farm, old farm way. We try and basically keep frontage for one additional lot on the cul-de-sac.
Who's the owner?
Mr. Devaney, trying to go on his first name.
Little bit. All right, so we got those...
We're looking to try to create a fifty-foot wide, small, short cul-de-sac. It's gonna be an undersized turnaround, undersized right of our... Right away with cul-de-sac diameter, wanted to get the areas to work out. House number seventy-four will have a proper setback, an existing setback and existing septic in the front. Additional lot would be put in the back, right away from the cul-de-sac proposing. Again, kind of trying to keep it like a driveway to, as opposed to a roadway, since it's only sort of one, one house typically. This is a driveway now is off of Bear Hill for the, for the house number seventy-four, and we'd like to actually put that off and then, then driveway, have one driveway as opposed to, to right next to each other, so.
So you're eliminating the driveway off of the lot one?
Yeah.
Yep.
But we, we're gonna need a lot of waivers, that's why I just wanted to kind of get an idea of just something, the waiver we need, the biggest one is the radius of the right away is only forty-five versus sixty-five. We get the frontage, we need the bulk of the lots, but in the area, we basically, we just make the area for, you know, any for each lot. We only have like a thousand square feet extra of area.
But you don't have the back lot.
Is that...
What's the, what's the width here?
It's not, oh, no.
Okay.
I can show it off.
Because you got, can't narrow any more than one-twenty. If you got a hundred and fifty-foot frontage, so.
That's what this, yeah.
Yeah, lot one, so.
All right, I'll take a look at that. We do have two hundred and forty feet in the back, so might be able to make that work after some...
So what do you do? You're in for a discussion for N A and R, or are you in discussion for...
Nope, it's gonna be a subdivision.
A conceptual sub, single lot subdivision?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, single lot subdivision type thing, we're trying to...
Is this for, for your family back there, or is that the applicant?
Potential buyer.
Buyer? So who owns it now?
Mr. Devaney.
Is he here?
He is not. So I just, I just wanted to know if this layout looked like it was something that would be acceptable from town. Once we, before we do much further work on it, we just kind of wanted to get an idea. And said once, a few other, let's say one lot subdivisions that were in the past.
An easier way to do something like this would be, so you're gonna relocate the frontage, you would have to build it. So build three hundred feet in, putting a hundred and fifty feet for house seventy-four on the first hundred and fifty, and then the second house lot on the other one fifty, and that would do your, do your driveway. And then you'd have to come up with some kind of a turnaround or something like that. So there's your three hundred feet of roadway giving you two, two frontages. This looks...
Like this.
I understand you meet the reg on, on this thing here, but you wouldn't build that, that's kind of...
Yeah, well, we can't, we can't actually go much further in because we lose the area.
What about here, can you go three hundred in?
No.
Why?
Because we only have just two of it. With that size road right there, we only have two of it. We go any further in, we use up more area for the roadway right away, and we don't have the area we need for the lot, so.
Yeah, and at the moment, I don't think you got that either, in the back. The lot can't narrow down any more than eighty percent of required frontage.
Yeah.
Which would be one-twenty.
We gotta check the new zoning bylaws, there was something new.
It was three oh three five, it's, it's still stated eighty percent, but it was, it gave a one-twenty number.
No, it's, it's in the new bylaw, okay? I believe we did change something, and I can't remember.
We changed the language on it, but the dimension, I think, stayed the same. But it's something to look at.
Yeah, something to look at. I thought, I thought the way I read it, it was you had to have a hundred and twenty-foot circle somewhere on the lot, didn't matter.
The circle was, that's correct, that was, that was a different reg though. Unless it got changed, it was three oh three five. The back end can't be any, any narrower than eighty percent of the required frontage, which a one-fifty frontage would bring it down to one-twenty feet. And then the CBA is the circle, contiguous buildable area circle, and that for the setbacks. So those might be missing too.
Well, yeah, because what you have written here, which is, I presume how it's written, it says the minimum width required is a hundred and twenty feet.
Yeah, so that's, that makes that right, and a hundred-foot circle, and then going forth, so. It was three oh three five under the old number, but...
Yes, it's, um...
Silly question, but who owns over here?
Mr. Devaney, I think they did approach him for one inch area.
That would be your best, best option?
I don't think he was interested in something.
Oh, well, this is right.
Still the same.
There's a bond and everything over there.
Eighty percent, which is one-twenty.
So it's still one-twenty?
Yeah.
What's the new number, was three oh three five, is that?
Eight point two point one.
Okay, so you, you still got that obstacle? And then, uh... Yeah, and that's on both, and then you get, what about the CBA on setbacks? Because the hundred-foot diameter circle was, was supposed to be...
See that? Does it? That's an old trick. So you see this?
The new circle is one-twenty, isn't it? And it doesn't, it can be in a setback, that's what I wrote it. It just has to be on the...
That's already just checking, yeah, under the old.
I mean, if he, if he just simply, I don't know how much land it takes off of this, which is the lesser lot, you know, if you go th- this way. Can you see my thumb?
If you push it that way?
Yeah.
It's probably more than a thousand square feet that he has in surplus, but...
Animals except animals, yeah, we could do whatever, have to take a look, because the circle's not gonna be tight, so we have to look at that. Anyway, let me, let me back to drawing board.
I, I, yeah, I just, I don't know what else they tell you, Bill, I mean, you know, you get, you get stuck in it, I mean, it... And because it's a subdivision, it has to pass through here first, before you go to the Board of Appeals, ask for a waiver, I mean, not a waiver, but a... Variance, you know, so I mean, you could... They, they don't like doing variances, they feel like they don't need to do, that's one of the problems that's coming up. So I, you know, I think you've got to play with it, it's...
Yeah, that's, that's like super tight, just on the cartoon sketch, you know? So it's, it may not be viable. You know, obviously, if there's enough land over here, and they re-approach, and everybody's willing, then that solves one of your problems anyway. All right.
I will, I'll go back to drawing board.
Is there, is there anything of the abutting land that they...
Well, that's it, that's what we're just talking about.
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Barrett, if he's, if he's got land, that's in Shoren over here, if he's willing to sell, if they're gonna do all this, because this, this contraption, and we're not even talking drainage and other systems and everything, I know it's a cartoon, but, you know, just the conceptual, but this, this looks extremely tight.
Well, you can get drainage to work there, because it's not very much roadway, but it's still very tight.
Yeah, it's extremely tight with a septic in here, and then this is way off, but where does that go, so... You know, does this circle meet up in here?
I think the problem with moving that line over is, we have problems with circles and with the areas.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it's...
It's a rectangle, but it's not.
It's tricky.
It's narrower than I think.
Okay.
All right, I'll have to find the, what the comments will be so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that in. Grammy Way?
I'm gonna hold on to that a little.
All right, uh, who we got, Graham Way? Okay, how are you doing?
Okay.
Graham Way?
Yes, please.
Oh.
Is, um, is Bob Arcillian coming back, do we know?
If he's gonna be here, it's probably eight-thirty or maybe a little later, he's before the Seabrook Board of Appeals right now, so.
Well, we can certainly progress this if the board wants to, I just suspect that Bob may have something to say because he's been involved. Deals with where we are with respect to inspections, the, the request is a simple one, it's just a release in part of the letter of credit. We've not requested a release before, we, we got a covenant on the subdivision originally, we completed a portion of the work about, the exact amount that we completed.
Who's, who's reviewing this one?
Peter Willan, Peter's here.
So we had, we had substituted the letter of credit for the covenant back on, back in late twenty sixteen, September of twenty sixteen, and so we're seeking tonight, based on an updated spreadsheet that we have, an additional work that's been done, we're seeking a release, the current amount is three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, and we're receiving, we're seeking a release down to the amount of a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred dollars, which is, based on our accounting, what's left to be done, still a fair amount of work, but obviously that's a...
What were their numbers again?
Sure, so the, the current amount, the only amount that the, the letter of credit has ever been for is three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven fifty-six.
Okay.
And that was the amount in the letter of credit dated August twenty-second of twenty sixteen. And so...
Is this your number, Peter?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so what's your recommendation on this, the one eighty-nine?
The one eighty-nine.
Okay.
The only question I had on that is that some, you know, the, the work wasn't inspected by GZA because we weren't notified. I was, I'm understanding that Bob had been out to the site a couple times.
Yeah.
And I just kind of held my letter in draft until I could speak to Bob, I haven't been able to speak to him, so, um...
Just to, um, because we, this pops up, and it's not to ding, ding anybody, but are all the developers aware that in the reg, ten days prior, before you're doing any milestones, or anything, because we got a tree problem on another subdivision, that somebody just showed up with trees one day, and supposed to notify us in writing, minimum of ten days in advance, so we can be out there, so that this kind of stuff speeds the process along, and so we don't have to go back and recreate the wheel, but on the recent subdivisions, maybe because building wasn't going on for a little while, that seems to be, nobody seems to know that, and it's in the reg book?
Yeah, there, there certainly hasn't been notification in writing, I think that there was a...
Yeah, it's gotta be in writing.
I think there was miscommunication, not my finger, it might be on our part.
No, no, it, it's just a board thing that we're gonna have to start putting the big light-up sign on, because you're, you're not the first guys to miss it, and it's not to ding anybody, you know, most of the time it goes okay, but we do have some instances where we weren't notified, not your subdivision I'm talking about, on another one here, on two or three or four hiccups on another subdivision, and no one notified the board in writing ten days prior, you know, and it's a, it's a dart, really, I mean, if you have to fine tune the date, that's great, but, but we're not getting notified, so we don't have inspectors out there, this stuff gets, and then, you know, we're trying to give you your money back, and we don't know if it was done.
Absolutely, and I'm sure, you know, Peter, that, you know, for the last milestones that we have, it's been notified plenty of the time.
Yeah.
I'll make sure, we'll define running.
For the, so, so you're looking for, I mean, a release of one-ten, or are you looking for to maintain one-ten?
Maintain one-ten.
Okay, we're looking for one eighty-nine onto that. And you're comfortable with this number over here, that's, that's why you put this together here?
Yes.
Is the rest of the board, because we can, you know, just quick this at one eighty-nine, hold it, and you can back in for a re-release when they check in for Bob, and...
Bob will use it.
Yeah. Okay, so motion?
So what, we're reducing about one eighty-nine even?
To one eighty-nine.
Keep it to one eighty-nine.
Keep it to one...
So we're gonna maintain one eighty-nine.
Okay.
Based upon GZA's report.
Okay.
And it's one eighty-nine even, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one eighty-nine even.
Yeah.
So we're reducing it by...
Would you like a copy?
Uh, one...
What, and this is a passbook account, or is this a, what is this?
Letter of credit.
A tripart?
Letter of credit, sorry.
Letter of credit through which bank?
Five, Saint Salm's Bank.
Salem five, okay, and Denise, I'm sure is on board with that.
She?
She give you the bank, usually they do.
That was all approved a while back, I'm assuming...
Yeah, okay, it was just a question.
Yeah, we have it.
Okay, so so motioned, and now, now that's just a, um...
Just a standard, your, your form.
Just a standard form.
Well, I lost that mouth length, so I just wrote in the one eighty-nine.
Yeah. And a motion to approve and endorse.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, that's good. Just get that back, you know, the certified Denise, one to us.
Yeah, yeah, get a copy. By the way, I mean, because I'm trying to find, you know, what's left in the account and all that, and I think I'm seeing like six thousand dollars in cash. So we gotta pay Peter. Yeah, so if I get...
I think that should be sufficient.
You think so, okay. Okay.
Can we get ASBILs fine too, so...
I just don't wanna, don't wanna have a problem where I...
So you gotta replenish that at some point for the ASBILs, and, because that's usually about ten or whatever, to do the sites, bounds.
And get, make a...
Et cetera.
The copiers working, if you want, make a copy, that, give me a copy back, so we, we got it, that's all, and I...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
George, while you're here, are you gonna be able to take care of a lot of that, what the runoff has done in that subdivision?
Yeah, Larry's...
I mean, I, that really tore out that planting area pretty good, and down the bottom of the hill, and we took a run up there today, and I mean, you know, where everything seems to be tilted, it looks like it's all gonna run right into the road.
Yeah, Larry's planning for that, and that's on his list for next week, he said.
All right, I'm even talking to yards themselves.
On the left side, yeah, they have Larry's.
Okay, you know, it's, I'm telling you now, because another good rainstorm like that, you know, you're gonna have a...
Sixty days, it's gonna look beautiful.
Has, has Larry been out there, because he's really, really good at doing that stuff?
He has been, and he's gonna be there on my excuse, working on it.
Um, yeah, I'm not concerned if he's on the job.
Yeah.
Well, I see if there's another pen and, and a bucket.
On ten, how many would you...
Yeah, but they're mostly MLR pens.
I'll use this one.
See if it works first. I gotta go to the dollar store.
Is that working there?
It's good enough, I have a pink marker in my bag.
Feels like, I don't know, where we're going. Yeah, these are a little, a little on the dried up side, huh? Somebody treated in our pens for chairs.
Oh, no, we bought the chairs.
Yeah, I know, we didn't buy the pants.
Yeah.
Hey, here's one that writes, okay, all right, so what's next?
We don't let a nickel go to waste in this town, let me tell you right now, so. All right, we got Atwood Estates.
Me again.
Oh, you're on Atwood. So who's, who's doing Atwood, this thing, Office Center Street, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, um, so same, same applicant, we've got, this is pretty, pretty simple A and R, we're treating some lot lines. My client would hope to have more of an informal discussion, but that's not what's on the agenda, just the ARs on the agenda, so I think what I'll probably do, unless you tell me otherwise, is just proceed with explaining the A and R, getting the A and R signed, and then get on maybe your next agenda to have a more substantive discussion about some options that we're looking at for the remainder of the subdivision.
Okay, wait a minute, okay, let's bring us up to speed, when we last left our heroes, you guys started site, uh, tree removal and some other things down there in this Office Center Street, right? We're talking the same project?
Yeah.
The Chesapeake project?
We, we got, you know, some complaints and everything, I mean, we think they went too far.
Right, so, so that's, about that, I didn't know you were doing two subdivisions tonight, that ten days, was the town notified, and were the trees tagged on the caliper size per the regulation prior to cutting, because it looks like they went a little crazy?
I'm, I'm not, I wasn't aware, so where, where on the site was this occurring, can you show me where that is?
Pretty much the whole site.
Pretty much the whole site, they clear cut.
Do we have the original?
So, definitely in this area, their original plan didn't show removing nearly as many trees as, don't exist there now, because there are no trees left.
And so that's, that's where the ten days come in, and the, the trees over a certain caliper in size were supposed to be banned, and then located on the plan, and then approved by the board prior to the Lorax coming in?
And that would not occur.
And none of that occurred that we know.
Not that we know of, no. So like this plan is showing pretty much all of this is staying vegetated, this is staying vegetated, 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 and none of that is what exists there today, because there's, like, all of that is gone.
So who did the clearing, do you know?
I, I don't know, and I apologize for being at a loss.
That's all right.
You probably know we didn't represent the applicant.
Right, well, that's what we're shocked.
Right, that's what, that's what confused me. Right, that's what confused me when you stood up, so.
Well, you may have to represent it, cause we might throw a cease and desist.
So a suggestion to the board is that we find out who the landscape architect is that was, that was supposed to be on site to tag this stuff? Get them in here for a meeting, find out what they did, what they missed, and then we can, we can either site walk it on our own?
Yeah.
Well, you're gonna have to get the trucks out of there while he's just pulling.
Well, site walking, you know. What can walk it?
So I'm pretty sure Unit Construction did all of that.
They're the contractor, they might have been the ones clearing it, but they're not the ones who.
Yeah, they did do the site clear.
Yeah, and who's, who for us is doing this? Phil doing this one?
I believe so.
Is this Phil on this one?
Phil.
It's just Mike Sergi now.
No, 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 no. Our review guy.
Our representative, who's our engineer on this?
Oh, Phil Henry.
Is it?
Yeah.
He don't like to get dirty.
Okay, so, so we're gonna need him to meet with your engineers to find out what happened to the trees? And then make a proposed. Solution?
Phil Henry.
Who is it?
Phil Henry.
Phil Henry.
Phil Henry.
Is our engineer?
Civil Design Group.
Oh, okay, Civil Design Group, okay.
So.
Will you email me his contact information?
I will, I will.
We'll have our guy reach out.
So if you get with, have your engineer get with our engineer?
Yeah.
They can discuss this, meet on site, and then L parties meet the next meeting before we sign anything on A and Rs or anything like that. I think we gotta resolve this issue.
Can you just walk us through that though? Cause I'm just curious what, oh, I see.
Yeah, so the A and, the A and R is simple. It's actually, it's, see the old lot line to be deleted there?
Yeah.
That's being shifted. There is a second one, old lot line to be deleted. The line goes straight, it's gonna be shifted. And then this one here is becoming like that, or right there.
And what's the reason?
We're trying to bring these all into compliance and this was part of the conversation that we wanted to have at this meeting or I guess a future meeting. We wanted to explore the possibility of potentially doing something with these lots, duplexes potentially in lieu of single families, if that was a possibility. We certainly wanted to at least bring them into compliance so they meet the frontage and area requirements for that possibility, whether we're able to do it. That's a discussion that we have to have with the board.
Well, this is, then you have to go back in, because this is, this was approved as a single lot subdivision? Not a, so you have to do the whole process all over again?
Yeah, you're gonna have to refile.
We realize we need to file for a modification.
Yeah.
Will be a major modification.
Yeah, no, we.
Yeah, so that's a whole.
I mean, have they been told what it's gonna cost them? And they're gonna have to give up units.
And, and I think that they recognize that. We've had that conversation and I think that.
Who's they? Is it still Christiansen and Sergi?
No, no, they sold it to Al Cool Yard.
Al is who I'm representing, Al Cool Yard, he's a trustee.
Yeah.
Okay.
The same Al Cool Yard for?
Yeah, Marion Way fame.
He has a habit of cutting trees down without tagging things.
Yeah.
So I've noticed.
Well, we'll have that discussion and I'll.
We've had that discussion with them, but anyway, okay, so you're new to the case.
Yes.
I have one other problem and that is I don't know if they're taking out too much material because they were limited as to what they could take out. I mean, this is part of the aquifer. We didn't wanna totally destroy this whole area. I mean, and Sunset Circle was just above, they didn't take a teaspoon out.
So who's, who's monitoring the truck loads? Okay, back to that.
Do we have a Bob?
Yeah, we do, we have an engineer. That's, that's, okay, so we have the same, same issue.
He doesn't wanna get dirty.
Okay, so we need to get Philip out there, like, right away before any more trucks get out and find out what happened? Where's the loads? Who's got the manifests on tonnage coming out of there? Cause they were, it was an estimated number.
Right.
And we should be able to get close to that, but they should have forms on how many truckloads going in and out and where's it going? Cause it's not supposed to leave the town either. What was in the site removal? Does anybody remember site removal bylaw, what we did on that? On that approval?
Do you remember what we found on that MOD?
It was on the, yeah, it was on the, on the removal. There was, there was a limit. I can't remember how many times off the top of my head.
We had it the other day, yes, if you can find it.
So, so the engineers have to talk? They have a site meeting?
Yeah, there was a percentage that could be removed. There was, in terms of, in terms of square footage.
Right.
There was also, it showed where they're going from what, it was from ninety feet to maybe like seventy-five feet, something like that.
Right, right.
But they weren't scooping this whole thing.
See, the problem is, the other fellows, the previous applicant came in and knew all this? Then somebody bought it.
Right.
He wasn't here for any of this. Guarantee you, he didn't read the memorandum or the regulations, judging by what we saw up on ninety-seven already a year ago.
Well, it still says Christiansen and Sergi there, and so Mike sure.
That's on the plan though.
Yeah, Mike Sergi should.
No, but he's still the engineer.
He's still doing the engineer, so.
Yeah, he's still doing the engineering, so.
So our engineer's gonna meet with their engineer and then we gotta have a discussion before tonnage disappears, which has happened in town before. I think we have a little pit there going somewhere off Salem Street that happened a while ago.
That, that's what they're taking out, that's like gold. Because that's what they use in septic systems.
Yeah, no.
So the, the reality is, and we could vote a cease and desist right now tonight.
I think we need to, we need to stop. Definitely till we get this underway. I mean, I'm sure it can go, but yeah, I'm with you on that. Because it sounds like we had a shell game going here for a little bit on moving things around and we weren't in the loop onto that. So I will make that motion.
Okay.
Is there a discussion of enforcement on the end of tonight?
Doesn't have to be.
It's just stop.
It's just stop.
Okay, for now.
Until we can, yeah, I mean, this, we've got a tree line that disappeared. We got a lot of tonnage coming out and we got, we have a major swap of players that obviously we, did you guys meet with these guys when they came in? Did they sign all the papers over?
All, all I've had is, I think, one phone call.
So were all the documents re-signed over, you would know?
To my knowledge that they were, but I don't know that for certain. We were.
You know, all the forms and.
We were engaged last week with the understanding that we were coming for an informal conversation and having A and R signed. That wasn't a word that worked with proceeding and I certainly wasn't aware there made these issues you raised.
Yeah.
Were issues at all.
Okay.
But I, I do have concern with an enforcement order issue with that. I'm not prepared to address the potential issuance of an enforcement order or a cease and desist.
Until the engineers, we can go ahead, put the, put the order in for the cease until the engineers come in, come back with a solution, because we gotta, we have to resolve this. And in the meantime, you know, this can happen fairly quickly. The engineers can be out there and have a solution by the end of the week.
No, I'll be on the horn of the engineer's horn.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna second the motion, okay, that we issue a cease and desist.
Vote.
Okay. I don't know where Cool Yard is to any more, to tell you the truth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We had a hard time tracking him because the town owed him a little over two thousand dollars from a forty B he did a number of years ago.
The town owed him?
Yeah, we owed him. We went through three addresses before I could find him. So the guy moves around and I think the last, well, in the conversation, I think he told me he's now living in New Hampshire, which is number four. So he used to live in Groveland.
Yeah, right down on the river.
Until his wife decided he wasn't. So it's a history here, so you know. Okay?
So are you, are you not acting on the A and R tonight?
No.
No, we're not, no.
Has it been timed stand with the clerk to start the clock for an application of an A and R?
Has to come in here first. We fixed that problem.
Yeah. I mean, the one thing you're gonna have to also inform them is initially, this thing started out as five lots. But what was behind the five lots was to scoop out everything and take it down to sixty feet. We weren't gonna do that. We've done enough of that. We built Logan Airport. So at this point, you know, the eight, we let them have four more. Four in the front, three more and four in the back. And we thought that was very fair. And.
But it was for the previous applicant. That's what happens is that you have, the applicant comes in, they go through the hearings, they hear all the residents and they understand what they're up against. And then the minute it gets sold, a new person comes in and they, they are not aware of what happened the previous three years.
The other thing that I've seen out there is, you know, instead of hay bales, I mean, they got the round stuff, you know, that basically, it's not gonna hold back much. The tubes. That's all right, you know, on a small hill or something like that, but not, not that. I mean, it's, and there's areas there that have to remain as retention plots on those, the lots. I mean, if they're not. You know, I mean, and it's gonna be out of that road. Then there was also an agreement that they were going to re, remove the material from the road because there's a very large hump in that road. And there's been accidents down in that area. And the police wanted that removed and there was an agreement between the previous owners, Christiansen and Sergi, and Bobby Eric Kelly, our road commissioner. Bobby was gonna resurface the road once everything was removed from there.
This is Center?
Center.
Center Street, yeah.
Yeah. And that, they're not, they're not touching that at all right now.
I wouldn't expect them to do that.
Yeah, that's probably the last, gonna do the payment.
I would think they would do that.
Yeah.
At the end.
At the end of the project anyhow.
Was there a timing requirement in your decision?
No.
Bobby was quite, I'm talking with Bobby today, he was questioning it.
Yeah.
But the, the earth removal permit is, is where they may be in violation of, which is something to look at, which the engineers will take a crack at, but Al may not even be aware of that. That this was a two separate hearing process for earth removal.
So you issued a separate permit?
Yeah.
Did that issue subsequent to the subdivision approval?
They were hand in hand, conjunction too.
Hand in hand, in conjunction with it.
So, but that's where the limitation and also none of this stuff can be trucked out of town.
No, I'm worried about.
Yeah, so hopefully, you know, that's why you need the load sheets and find out where this stuff went on that, so. But that's it, so let's get the engineers going. Our engineer will report to us and see if we can get you back in on the next meeting and get you underway.
What are you meaning by that?
Well, I think we oughta go to the.
Twenty-fifth?
Are we doing another September, mid-year, October?
We wanna do another one in September, I think, you know, because, I mean, I don't wanna get into these long.
So two weeks is the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Okay, so what, what's that date?
Tuesday, the twenty-first.
Eight o'clock.
Tuesday, twenty-first.
That gives you, you know, some time.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the next meeting.
Okay.
The other thing that needs to be done, when those trucks come out of there, is either put rip rap out there. I mean, sometimes I've seen they use, you know, scads or chain link fence and everything so that the material falls off the tires of the truck. I mean, if you look out there on that street right now, it's just.
It's just all sand, right?
Yes, sand everywhere.
Construction entrances.
So, I mean.
Which they, that's this here.
Yeah.
It's on the plan, they just didn't put it in yet.
And we.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they call off our construction, it's a standard thing, but.
But it's, that's not what's being used.
I didn't notice it installed, no.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, Cool Yard's gonna have to understand, he's gonna have to work with the board, you know? If he's not, you know, well, that's it.
No, he will.
He ain't coming back.
Nope, he will.
All right.
Conversation, so let me, let me ask you, you've issued a cease and desist tonight.
Yeah.
If I'm in contact with the engineer tomorrow, the engineer's in contact with yours, they have a site meeting on Thursday or Friday, they resolve their issues. Twenty-fifth, two weeks from now, that's a long stop work order.
Yeah, but they got some other stuff to do, so maybe we can limit it to the engineer as to, like, allow them to do this, cause that's gonna happen, and a couple other things. They gotta do some site work, cause they gotta figure out where that, how far did they cut into that tree line? And then the landscape architect's gotta get back in there and then figure out, okay, when we're done with this, how do we replant that tree line and what do we plant it with?
Okay.
Yeah, there's items they can be doing in the meantime.
Yeah.
Okay, the engineers can authorize that?
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you wanna take comments?
Yeah. Okay, we, we do have some of the people here from Murray Court and which abuts this project. And you, you should hear what they have to say, Adam, okay? Go ahead, Karen.
Have you been by the site?
Yeah.[1468.22]
Have you been by the site?
Yeah.
This, this morning.
You're very welcome to come into my yard, climb the hill and stand and see firsthand the tree line.
Yep, I, I, we drove kinda like around.
That's what we were just talking about, yeah.
I mean, some of those tree lines that abut Harvard don't belong to him. That belongs to the lots on Harvard, 'cause their lot actually goes uphill.
Are you saying that portions of the tree line that are not abut have been removed?
Possibly, yeah.
It looks possible, I wouldn't know about that.
Yeah, that's why we need to shoot those ones.
That's why they were trying to keep as much in and just create a bowl where these were going.
Okay.
And then it was, you know, the tree line is all around, especially in the back by them.
It's very dark, so you wouldn't even see it tonight, but like, they were supposed to leave this portion, and this house on this lot is pretty much right here, and I can tell you right now that there's not a single tree here. Like, it's all taken to this man's house.
Cut in the buffer, we just don't, we just don't know whether they actually cut over the property.
Right, I can't, I can't be serving, right.
Yep.
Name, address, and having some information?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we got, Jim, you wanna recognize someone in the back? Jim?
Okay. You come up to the front, please, give your name, your address, okay?
Whoever's speaking.
Whoever's speaking, come up to the front.
Come on in.
You got it.
I have a question about, like, our house has been rattling.
Name first, please.
Uh, James Cavallaro, one Maris Road in Brooklyn.
Address.
Our houses and other houses have been rattling. I have a neighbor across the street on Murray, on Harvard Road, wasn't able to come, but asked me to mention this too. Like, Harvard Road is beyond where they're working, across the street, and he has a TV on his bureau, it's trembling. Our house has been shaken, and who's responsible if anything, like, if the basement cracks, septic system goes, pipes break, who pays for that?
They haven't done any blasting, have they? That's all sand.
It's just from the machinery they're using, it's like shaking.
Crushing the stumps?
Huge.
They're pulling it.
Yeah. I mean, we can't be putting in new septic systems and replacing pipes and fixing cracks in the wall, that's crazy.
Yeah, on a, on a pre-blasting site, this survey's done.
This was a stump removal, that they used a backhoe to get the stump, so I appreciate you coming through there.
It sound like the guy across the street thought that there was an earthquake, the one I'm talking about on Harvard Road, I mean, that's clean across, that's out, that's an outdoor.
Well, judge in front of the amount of trees taken out, I know, I'm not surprised.
And, and it's like, he said, my TV was shaking on the bureau, we got up, we're, what's going on?
How's the board wanna address that?
Well, you know, I mean, the only thing is, is, I mean, some of those things, I mean, to pull the stumps and all that, I mean, normally they grind the hell out of them, but, you know, if they pull them to one corner of the lot away from down closer...
Right, they grind them in.
Yeah, closer to Chester then, you know, the back, you know, by Center Street, I mean, and then...
Yeah.
They, they oughta be taking away as much as they can.
They're talking about, you know, during the process of removing.
Yeah, yeah.
So, like, like I said, I know on a blasting, you, you do a survey and then anything is, you know, there's insurance for that stuff on that, I, I don't, and everybody gets the, the sand in the air and the dirt, the wind's blowing and it's not watered down.
Yep.
I mean, that happened out here for years.
Oh, I know, I know that.
But on a typical construction on existing homes, how would the board like to address? I mean, I don't think it's gonna be major, major stuff, but it could be some stuff.
It's kind of, as he says, it's, it's kind of a normal process for when you put a subdivision in, plus, I mean, it's all sand over there.
Right.
So it's not ledge, or not clay, or nothing, so it's just, I mean, I understand what they're saying, is the machine, I mean, the dozer running back and forth, and that's kinda what is gonna happen, you know, it's, um, it's, it's not, but it's, you know, I don't think it's gonna hurt anything really, it's just...
Well, so I mean, if there's anything that's serious about it, that doesn't, you want us to just revisit it later, see?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Yeah.
We could revisit it later, definitely, but I'd have to say, I'm sure it's just machinery, just work, work it back and forth, and that's, you know?
So...
I mean, the only thing you can do is...
Even if it's like a road build, you know, if you go with the, they do the road in front of their house, it's gonna happen the same thing, so, you know?
Well, I had to tell you what I got in Elm Park over the years and everything, and you're a known Bobby to me.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly, what, what they do on Elm Park.
I mean, when they hit, when they hit those culverts, I hate to say it, it comes right across the whole park and hits me on the other side.
Well, I've lived there for forty years, and the house has never shaken.
And you haven't had anything, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, it's going on for forty years already.
Now, it's construction, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's kinda normal, I'm not, I'm not trying to...
I mean, what I would do is, I would keep a list of any damage.
Beside with the contractor, I'm just saying, that's kind of construction.
So, if we notice anything, take pictures of it?
Yeah, just bring it back into, to the board and, you know, it's not like cart punch, but, but yeah, I mean, if something does, if there's damage that occurs, take pictures, bring it back into the board and we'll talk about it and, and see what it is. But you're right, I mean, there's gonna be disruption because it ruined stuff up.
All the way across to Harvard Ave?
It's...
Well, you know, it's, it's heavy equipment, it's big, heavy equipment, he's, he's got a DA in there, so.
Oh, yeah.
They're done, you're talking about something completely different now. We're talking about the biggest backhoe I've ever seen slamming its bucket into a stump, slamming it in, and I'm sitting in my recliner, because it was too hot for me to go out, 'cause I can't breathe, and I'm bouncing. What the hell was that?
We're moved, the house is moved.
And my wife was asleep in bed, and she started shaking, boo boo.
Feels like an earthquake, it, it feels like an earthquake.
It's just the backhoe, that's all, just slamming the stump. They're long gone now, there's no problem now, other than one stupid truck has this extra loud backup beep, you know, the warning thing, my god, it sounds like a siren and everything.
I mean, that's...
I understand the point of them, but they're the most obnoxious things.
Yeah, they're, they're out of an option, but that's, that's safety equipment for them, they, they need to do it.
We know, that's excuse, that's fine.
I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to check up for the contract, I'm just saying, this is what happens.
I think the main concern, Corinne Kermelowitz, more Corinne from Murray Court.
Yeah.
The main concern is the tree line, you can see right straight through the, I don't have a tape measure to go up there and measure, but I can tell you just by eyeing it, they've taken a heck of a lot more trees out of there. So how do you rectify trees being dug and removed?
I know where you live, and...
You put it back.
I've, I've done by the house, you can see, I mean, you still have a tree line.
I can see the machine working.
You can see the machine working, but you, you, you still have a tree lot.
And the mountain of sand that's in, I mean, mountain, mountain of sand that they've, they've piled up in back of the hill there, but if they aren't going to adhere to, to regulations that you guys set out for them, what's the purpose of the planning going?
Well, that's...
Well, that's why we're here, you know?
That, that's what, if you didn't hear what we were, what we, what we mentioned right away, so we gotta stop on the project right now, we got the engineers going out to find out where that tree line is.
Yeah.
And if it got moved, and then if they took out more than that, then the landscape architects have to go back in and figure out a plan how to put those trees back, and they're not gonna be six footers either.
The people on Harvard Road are in worse shape than we are, they, I mean, you can, there's probably one or two trees that you can see if you pack on Harvard Road and look into their yards, there's practically no trees left.
Yeah, and, and as I, as I, Christiansen and Sergi told us, that some of those trees on top behind Harvard were actually on land owned by the people who live on Harvard.
Yeah.
And there were, and they were, and they were supposed to remain.
They took trees down on somebody else's property.
We're gonna find out.
We don't know, we're not sure, but...
That was a question.
What we have to do is get our engineer out there, and I mean, the, the unfortunate problem is, I mean, you know, I don't know if I wanna trust their engineer at this point whatsoever at all, because their engineer sold the property to this developer, and, you know, it's, I can call Phil in the morning and have him get out there with his crew.
Well, yeah, Phil's gonna be out there for us anyway, doesn't matter.
Yeah, and, I mean, if, if we find that they've taken too much material out and they've cut too many trees down, and they're gonna have to bring material back in, and not lousy Phil either. At the same time, they're gonna have to replant, reforest where they're supposed to. They wanna play that game, they can pay up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else for that?
Name, rack and horsepower. Address, too.
Cordell Blank, Jr., 157 Center Street, I think I'm probably the closest property that's impacted to this.
Yeah, you and that house.
Yeah, yeah, so I bought last November, wasn't disclosed in the, in the purchasing of the house, but it wouldn't have changed if I bought the house or not. I have two major concerns, one is drainage, which I know it's all sand, so I'm hoping I'm in the clear. I'm probably about twenty feet below the grade of where they're doing the construction. The second is privacy, they took the trees away, and with that elevation, I know there's gonna be a house about fifty feet off the property line, my corner of my house is probably only twenty feet because of it, how old it is. So, they're gonna be looking into my house, I'm gonna be looking into theirs. I met with the developer, and I said, you know, it'd be great if you could put a fence back along with trees, and I kinda got the, yeah, well, we'll see what we can do, so...
Well, buffer zones, can you, can you show us where you are over here?
So he's in this lot here.
And...
Right at the...
He's the center street.
So this is, see this line here?
Last house.
Those were supposed to stay.
Yeah, there's not, so I know the water main's coming up, yeah, so they can loop it all back in, that's, that's what they plan on bringing the water main up, so that's why they clear cut, from what I was told.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
So the other thing, as, in regards to your drainage issue, they're, they're routing the drainage this way, so there's gonna be a pond over here, so they're actually directing all the drainage away from your property and that way.
I don't know how they're gonna, they, they physically aren't gonna be able to do that with the current grade.
Well, they're not finished grade, they're, they are still supposed to, they're just moving stuff to get ready for building foundations, so there is still quite a bit of grading that they're supposed to be doing on the lots.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not against the development going in.
No, I understand, I just, as far as drainage goes, it is supposed to be routed away from your property, 'cause that was one of the concerns we had when they were designing this.
Yeah.
And it's also part of the regulations that they can't actually be discharging onto separate properties, everything has to stay on site.
Yeah.
So that, that should not be an issue.
Okay.
I understand the things, the way they are right now, and keep in mind, it's still very, very, very early in the process, so...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
That, that wasn't supposed to come up in there for, for a loop system, it's supposed to stay within the right of way, and then, right, right, so that, so now we get another problem.
We've got a number of things that we need to figure out.
So the, the other thing is, with this is, is I don't know if there's regulations regarding time of day when they work.
There is.
I mean, seven AM, they're out there with the DA's, the big bulldozers, I'm like, come on, guys, on Saturday, I'm like, I work five days a week.
There is, there is an hour scheduled.
They're also working past seven thirty at night.
Seven is, so, seven, sorry, they can start at seven.
No work on Sunday, start at seven.
Yes.
And I mean, there, it's, it's crazy, they're past seven at night, I, there's been at least several occasions...
How long have they been working out there?
At least three weeks.
Okay, so, so back to the ten day thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where's your house, sir? I'm 157, so I'm right here. I am the closest house to any house going in right now. And I know, it's all, all the steam's going warm Bentley, and they're not, they're not counting in time.
It's this, this is the water main.
So they looping it, it should come up, loop around and back down, right?
Uh, we weren't having them loop it, it didn't matter, because they had a hydrant and a, like, there's a hydrant here, which is the blow off.
So they took a shortcut because the water line's down there?
They put a block here and they're bringing a hydrant here.
They're also not doing, uh, natural gas, they're doing propane up there, I don't know if that's a concern.
Well, it's a gas, it's a gas company, they're just not...
They're not gonna work it out.
Yeah.
That's unusual.
Propane is fine, actually.
It looks, um, it's, it's unusual on new subdivision that, that grid wouldn't bring in the gas.
Not, not anymore.
Not there.
They're disputing.
Yeah, they're, they're on strike right now.
Well, even outside of that, they're not, not for this.
They're not even extending anything.
So basically, the, the drainage, privacy and hours of operation, you know, you have eighteen wheelers coming in using their J brakes, six thirty in the morning getting lined up to take that sand out.
Yeah, but where, where's this stuff going? That's...
Warm Bentley trucks, eighteen wheelers, that, that's not staying in time.
That's, that's off to Raleigh, that's where he operates out of, but it could be going somewhere else.
Yeah, but with nothing supposed to come off the site, how is the, how are they getting stuff out of there?
How are they getting it out?
Driving them down ninety seven.
Okay, I, I don't mean, actually, you know, mechanically, how are they legally taking stuff out? We don't know about it.
Well, we, we allowed them to take a bunch of...
There's a percentage to take out, I agree, that's on the site removal permit.
Right.
But we're also supposed to be notified ten days prior too, and someone's gotta be sitting there counting loads.
Yeah.
And we don't, we weren't aware, so we can't count the loads.
I mean, I'd walk down and talk to unit construction and GCs, and they're very friendly, they're, you know, as long as you approach in the right way, they're, they're willing to talk to you about it, it's just, you know, the hours of operation, I have two kids.
Yeah.
You know, the eighteen wheel is going down the street, I know there's probably not much you can do, it's a big construction site, but the time of day, Saturdays, you know, that's when families are around, the kids are out playing in neighborhoods, so if there's a way to curb that, or at least work together, so that, you know...
Well, yeah, hopefully they're not speeding down there either, but that's, that's, we can get, get a hold of that, but it's, it's great...
That's a police issue, yeah.
That's right, yes.
It's already a highway.
So, um, it's great that they're talking to you folks, but they need to be talking to us.
Call them.
And they're not, so...
What's our end hours? Is it seven to seven?
It's up to be at a...
Uh, no, it's not seven to seven, it's, um, the summertime is, I think it is, I think it's like seven to five.
Okay.
I believe, Saturday's a different time though.
I was gonna say Saturday's...
Saturday's a different time, it's, um, it's like seven to noon, or something, Saturday construction for heavy trucks.
Seventy, seventy-two.
Yeah, okay, I knew it was less.
Earth removal permit under section five dash three-five, the permitting authority has the right to limit the days of knowledge of operation for their decision.
Right.
So whatever the earth permit...
That's what we put in it, yeah.
Would have those particular hours.
Yeah.
Well, if there was a way to amend that, so Saturdays are not, that would be great.
Or even later.
It'll be interesting, uh...
I mean, not that they're almost done with the earth removal.
Yeah, but now they're gonna start with infrastructure.
Normally, you, you don't see an awful lot of stuff taken from a site, you really don't, they'll generally pile it for use later and everything.
Well, it looks like we made the right call.
They may strip, they may strip the soil, but it comes back too.
I appreciate you.
Thanks for coming in, folks, you guys, you guys are the eyes and the ears for the, for us, I mean, you live there, so you're gonna see something firsthand, so you can call us, come on in, write to us, you know, and, and, you know, we'll get these issues resolved on that. And this is exactly what we were talking about, you're new to the neighborhood, but this went through a couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay, and now we get a developer the same thing on this one.
Yeah, once I seen the billboard go up, I started reading all of the meeting minutes, and I'm like, oh, this is what's coming in, all right.
Yeah, I'm surprised no, no one disclosed that for you, but sorry about that, but...
All right, thank you.
On that, okay. Anything else, folks, or on this one?
Yeah.
You guys good? Okay, move on to the next one, Jim?
All right, Sunset Circle. We had created a punch list.
Yeah.
And it's on kinda like the second page in on that, so...
And then we get the resident list.
And, um, yep, we have the resident list.
Who's here from Sunset?
All of us.
No, 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 developer wise.
John.
Oh.
John Hargrave's the engineer.
One up front, okay. And who's here for us?
Uh, it should be Woody, but he's not here.
Okay, it's named Woody. John, how long you been working on this one?
Uh, good question. Back to Sheenway.
Back, okay, back to Sheenway?
Oh, yeah, you're back in two thousand and what, eight, nine, seven, six, five, four.
I didn't know what revision that was, like, number thirty-two or something, and this one was a rough one.
Right.
As, as we were pointing out, 'cause this went through so many different changes, and then the construction, same issue that we just talked about, yours is like, you know, I'm not saying that you're the one that's supposed to be doing this, but someone should've been, sorry, ten days prior too, on these milestones, and, and the punch list that we have here, besides some of the basics, is all mistakes that could've been caught, that's gonna end up costing the developer money to fix them. The biggest one that comes to mind for me is that we, we got a fire hydrant on some guy's property in the middle of his front lawn, it never should've been there, and it just appeared, and then trees that shouldn't be in the planting strip, they're supposed to be on the people's property, and, you know, minor little goofy things like that, but if, had we been there, we would've went, whoa, whoa, whoa. So, hopefully we can, you know, massage this stuff and get it all squared away, but, but, and then we get the, the crown problem on the road, you know, where the drainage isn't right, and, and that whole goofy thing where we had catch basins missing and manholes missing and, and all that, and I think we could've caught a lot of that if, if we had been notified that you guys were doing something, and everybody could've been out there, the engineers could've been out there, and...
Yeah, I was surprised that I wasn't invited to witness any of it either.
Yeah.
Or asked to do that.
Yeah, it's, this, this one had way too many hands on it, you know, I, I mean, let's, let's try to get this thing resolved and, you know, for the residents, obviously, and, and for you guys over there, so I, I saw two, two punch lists, did Woody send back you know, for the residents, obviously, and, um, and for you guys over there. So, I, I saw two, two punch lists. Would Woody send back a list with us?
Well, basically, we, the punch list, okay, the... John has put, yeah, John has put together, but, you know, it's...
It was mostly on the plan, like, it was mostly the plans missing this, the plans missing that.
Alright, so we don't have site inspection stuff, we've got...
His, his was more asphalt plan comments.
Uh, script errors and...
Information missing.
Okay, showing that. Alright, so let's start with, if, if you don't mind, since we have the, the residents here, why don't we start with their list? Because they're the ones that are... And does everybody have a copy of that?
I don't give a...
Do we have an extra one? Okay. And, so, um, looking at that, um, let's talk about this hydrant, because we've talked about it before. Does anybody have set of plans for that?
I have a grading plan.
Was it asphalt done yet? Do we, do we have a copy? If it's asphalt, it would be nice.
I, I know I posted one informally.
Right.
Do we have that planned?
Last year at this time, actually.
Is that at Wood?
Let's see what you got.
You got Sunset, right?
Okay. So, let's look at, let's look at this asphalt.
Let me see, if we can work with this.
Street acceptance, alright. So, we need a little more detail. Okay, Salem Street coming in, pull this back. So, yeah, this one, this one, so where's our utilities plan? Yeah, see, it's not showing the hydrant.
It's right there. End of the water one.
Yeah, see, and it's, it's outside the right of, so it's on private property. So, do we have a bigger utility plan there, Bobby?
Yeah, but that's maybe where it was supposed to be.
Right. That's exactly right. Where was this thing supposed to go, and how did it end up there, is my first question.
Supposed to be in the planting strip.
Well, I'm gonna tell you right now what happened, so it was supposed to have a bend.
But it comes here, and so this is all, you know, kind of an area, and going right across there. So, so the solution is to, you know, dig this down a little bit, cap it, you know, just cap it right there, and then, and then, this pipe's already here. So, find out where this is over here, excavate it up, and it's gotta be elbowed or teed or something like that. And put it right in this, right here, where it's accessible.
What pipe is here?
This is where the water comes up, comes up from here, as far as I know, right?
It goes down there. It's coming from Salem.
Coming down Salem.
Yeah.
So, it's coming in here, and then it goes down, so wherever it crosses here.
Does it, it comes down this way?
Yeah, they cut that whole swath out. That's one of our other issues.
Forgot to tree it. Yeah, there's three trees, and there's supposed to be six more.
See, what happened was originally, when they did that house...
Take the trees on the right-hand side, have them down there.
And all they did was end it.
End it.
Which we suggested.
Here.
Yeah, right there.
I was gonna say, I know.
I said, all they needed to do was turn it around. But the driveway's over here.
Your neighbor.
Yeah, the driveway's over here, and it's coming down this way. And, so that's why, that's why it's in the driveway.
So, what happened?
They, they flopped the house.
Well, they, they changed the house.
The driveway was on the left side.
They put a garage under instead of putting it apart.
Okay.
So, that's, that's why the hydrant is in...
Okay, so where's, does that pipe shoot across that forty-five to where Dartmouth Street comes up in?
Yes.
Okay, so right in that planting strip, or right, uh, right up where Dartmouth meets it within the right-of-way, that's where the hydrant should go.
So, you can't do that though.
Put it up there. Why?
Because the hydrant's acting as the blow-off.
Yes.
So, then we...
It has to be at the end. So, instead of a cap, you could throw a blow-off there.
But doesn't it go to the hydrant and back down?
No.
No.
No, so...
The hydrant is the end of the line, and they use it and has a blow-off.
So, where's the intercept on, on Dartmouth Street?
Like, uh, hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, so at the intersection is what, a T-joint, elbow?
T.
It's a T. Alright, so that becomes now the end line, and the other part gets disconnected.
But you can't.
Why?
Because their services run off with that.
Yes.
That's okay too. That, that can work too, because the service line is much smaller, and can be transitioned under, and can John Holmes it under the driveway without tearing it up. That's a simple fix. It's only a two-inch...
I think it's easier just to move it here. They just add the bend where it was supposed to be in the first place and put it here. You know, do crazy things, like build it to plan.
Well, that's what we had to find out where the pipe was, because I couldn't, I couldn't tell where that is.
Like, all, all it was supposed to do was this. It just didn't.
So, John, what do you know on this?
Um, I, I just recall Scott Green mentioning that that's coordinated that location with the water department.
I'm sure he did.
And somebody's... That seems a little, uh, little fudge. Alright, so engineering-wise, we got a bunch of ideas here. What's...
Well, I, I have talked to a water department, okay, and they, they can't do it. They told me thirty-five hundred, forty-five hundred dollars, okay? They would cap where the hydrant is right now. They'd cap that, okay, and then they'd basically move it, and they'd move it over into somewhere near.
Okay.
That's what they told me last night. That was probably four months ago.
So, it's a simple fix. That, that solves all the problems, solves the legality problem?
What you'd probably have to do is inform Bob, you know, what it's gonna cost, and...
Yeah, okay, so... So, have the water department do it, and then they'll just work with you on the tag price for that.
Yeah. I can't approve.
Yeah.
I have to bring it back to...
Alright, so, so for item one, solution would be relocation per town Groveland.
It's a popular bet. I got others in there.
Okay.
I gotta go get more.
And if, if water wants it over there...
Well, the water department.
Water department decide where they want their own hydrant, so, as long as it's off the property, and out of the lawn, and on the right-way. Okay. Let's see, there's a, John, there's an outlet out in the cul-de-sac on the backside that's a, it's a rigid two-foot...
Yeah, he knows it's...
Pipe, is it missing a grate?
Yeah.
What kind of grate do you guys put on that? Yeah, okay. So, that takes care of, uh, what, what's it look like? Is it just a cage? Or is it just rebar that drives down? It's a what?
It's been a while since I've looked at it.
Yeah, it's just an open pipe.
It's just an open pipe, so what do you typically...
It's big, big pipe like this.
Right, right, right.
It's supposed to be a flare-down.
Instead of putting riprap in the foxhole, okay, he throws a few stones in it.
Okay, so...
So, I mean, the whole thing's exposed. I mean, animals could go up inside.
Exactly what, okay, so what's the grate?
It's a flare-down. It's a flare-down.
So, what's a flare-down? Oh, fluted?
Yeah.
Got it, okay. So, it's, it sandwiches down?
It starts like this, and then it goes out, and it's...
Like this tall?
Uh, the resident list.
Yeah.
Yep, that one.
That's the second one.
Yeah, right.
We need a grate, so that, that...
It's supposed to be a flare-down with riprap.
Right.
Okay, so that explains that. Okay, um, where, this is where Bobby comes in. Where are we, John, with that? That grate is so messed up on that street. Is that the finish coat on that?
That's what we were thinking.
Because it's pretty, it's pretty rough. Yeah, what did Woody have on that comment?
The grates were completely...
Never, never saw something so bad.
So, so, what, so that helps us in two ways. One, it answers the question on the five-year cut. Who wanted gas, natural gas? Okay, and has anyone contacted Grid about that?
About the natural gas?
Yeah, I've called natural gas a couple of times.
And what'd they say? Because usually they can run that right up the, in the grass strip.
They're, they're not, they're not doing any more services.
Oh, that's it, they're installing?
Yeah, when they went on strike, I gave them a call right away.
Yeah.
And they told me they didn't know, but I had called them maybe about a month ago, and the strike is still on.
Right, okay.
And they said that, um, if I pay them tomorrow, there was no chance that I would get the natural gas in November, because they stopped because of the weather.
Okay. So...
April would be the earliest that they could stop, that they get the backlog from the people that have already paid. So, if you pay, like in January, more likely than not, you get it sometime by next November.
I'm, I'm seeing a spring correction to the...
Natural gas is not our issue.
No, no, the road is.
No, but what they're worried about is...
But they have a five-year...
Right now, we can't let them dig into the road.
Oh, right.
To install it.
And the other thing is, John, was there, um, were you guys running the natural gas in on the utility side before?
The original plan called for natural gas.
Yeah.
My purchase and sale states natural gas.
So, that's, so how did, who was, was that a Scott thing? Yeah, okay, so, so it was back to our problem, because it was on the plan, um, where it should've been in there. But if we're doing a correction on the crown, we're not gonna do it this time of year.
No.
We're gonna do it in the spring, so that solves that problem.
The other thing is, I still think that Grid could run it in the grass strip.
No, they're not, they're not gonna install...
Yeah, they will. They'll do it in the grass strip, or they do it all the time.
Oh, they'll do it in the grass strip, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
They're not gonna go down the road, are they?
No, 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 but it's, it's part of the subdivision, so if they do it in the grass strip, and, but there's a question here on the five-year plan, if they had to do something. So, that, that'll neutralize it, so that'll answer the question with that, so, um...
So, you'll be okay to have it installed, but what they'll do is, National Grid will put it in the grass strip along the side of the road?
Yeah.
If the three families go in on it, the price is considerably less.
Absolutely.
Than if I do it myself. I think all total...
But if it was on the purchase and sale, you, didn't you already pay for it?
Uh, because they, they changed it to Townsend, to propane.
How did, okay, well, that's, I don't know what your purchase and sale says, but I know that we have a, we have a gas line on a plan, so that's... Okay, so, so that's supposed to go in, so, one way or another, that'll, we'll have to figure that one out. Okay, but it's, it's a plastic line anyway, it's, uh, the way they run it is real. Grid puts it in anyway.
Yeah, Grid puts it in, but then still, Grid, Grid can refuse it, and it will take, it will, it will hold up a subdivision. That's why the contractor that bought the lots put propane in.
Propane in to get it going.
He wanted to get it going.
Right.
And get it done.
Okay, I understand that. So, Grid, but Grid will want the money, so they'll put it in.
Yeah. I doubt it, at this point, I doubt it, so...
Well, not today, but...
Well, I think it's three hundred and seventy feet for the entire lot, give or take a little. And so, just to go to my house, because I'm the center house, it's like three-thirty.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I, 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 I understand that, I'm just saying, Grid is just hard to work with, and they're not gonna do anything right now.
Internal issues.
Okay, so that's...
And that's why the contractor just went to propane.
Yeah.
Instead of...
So, that's a grid. That's a grid thing, but we...
That's a grid thing.
We can waive the other thing, so that'll take care of that. We got a crowning thing we gotta take care of. Okay, so that...
He told me the pipes were there, but he lied about everything else, so...
Oh, no.
He lied about a manhole missing, never mind a gas... I mean, a whole manhole. Yeah. It's like, that thing's enormous. How do you miss that?
They, they caught him in West Newbury doing something wrong too, so...
Oh, really? Okay, anyway, alright, so, so that, that solves the gas problem. The trees, which we've been talking about, on the right-hand side of the right-of-way.
Coming in.
Coming in. Uh, and this is one of the things that Jim was out there for this, I was out there, I think Bobby A. was out there early on, when we talked about the trees over there. Okay, the guy went a little crazy with the, with the trees. Usually, we can't get them to plant enough trees. Okay, this was the opposite here. However, they didn't follow the regulation, because they're not supposed to be in that planting strip. There's supposed to be two trees per lot, wherever the homeowner's tagging it. If there's no homeowners there, they, they go onto the homeowner's property, so the homeowner can maintain them and take care of the trees. And so, the roots don't go rip up the sidewalk, or push out the curbing, or anything like that. So, a solution, because down on this cut here, three trees, one, two, three, were, were put in there, but from here all the way down is, is like a Nunn's Hill Two. It's a, it's a giant raceway.
Those woodships are working.
I'm, I'm not saying for stability-wise, I'm saying for sight.
I was never a fan of those things, but man, they're working. They're working everywhere they put them.
No, I don't, I don't mean for stability or erosion, I'm just talking about aesthetics. Okay, pure aesthetics. So, if we took the trees that were here, that are already there. Okay, on this line, and put them in here, that solves two problems. Eliminates this, so that the folks here that have it on here, so they can, you know, get the mowing and this and that, doesn't rip up the curbs, the sidewalk, or anything like that. And nobody's gotta buy any more trees, because it'll put in here, and it'll look prettier.
Yeah, but those were put in so that the butter wasn't gonna look at traffic going by his line.
But there's no traffic on this side of the trees, not that side, this side, this is a tree liner already all the way down.
Cars come in.
Huh?
Cars come in that street.
Are we talking the same side?
Yeah.
What do the residents think? It's your street.
Well, there's already tree, I mean, there's bigger trees there than the ones that are planted. So, the little trees are kind of in the middle of that grass strip, but there's trees mostly behind that, so...
The one problem was the trees that are planted in a grass strip, okay, were on a plan.
Yeah, the wrong spot.
And the same was in the cul-de-sac, they were on a plan. I mean, all we wanna see in a cul-de-sac, but we couldn't put it in the middle, but we want one tree in the middle shaved six feet up. And it's, and not, not to grow high either. And, uh, pretty much maybe grass around the outside, and the rest of it mulcher on the inside. That's, that's our idea of a, of a cul-de-sac. The, the unfortunate problem is, again, they were on a plan. What's in the middle? Like, you really can't put a hardscape in there because of what's underneath that.
Right.
So...
So, so the solution on these here, which is the problem that they're having with mowing, and there, there's a whole tree line here, so it's not a, it's not a traffic shade issue. But we do have to put something down into here.
If you take those trees away from there on top of that, okay, you're gonna probably destabilize the top of that banking.
Which place? This is flat. It's over here where the banking is.
I, I...
No, this is Tony's.
Yeah.
Right, right. No, 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 not, not, not those other trees, just these, what are those things? Those little apple things, or... The, the trees that are actually in the planting strip, not the, not the buffer trees that Tony's got. They're those little individual things that have the green bags on them. They're in the planting strip.
They're like tiny fruit trees.
Yeah.
They were there, weren't they?
No.
No, they're subdivision trees.
July or something.
Yeah. Yeah, those are the ones, they're only, like, this caliber, two-inch caliber, that are in there.
Yeah, they're probably, you know, two, two and a half inch, three inches, Diane, are trees.
They're small.
How high? Already?
Six or eight, yeah. They're not very tall.
Well, you got a root system in there now, that's the problem. If you had those things, you know, when they were about four feet high, yeah, you'd say go dig them up.
No, 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 they came like that.
No, they got, they got put in at six feet.
They were about six feet when they were put in.
So, they...
They got, they put in the right kind of trees.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the wrong spot. So, the, the residents are here, and it's on their list, and is, is that solution what you're looking for, is to get these out of here, so they don't have to go on and off with the mowing? And then, and what the board was looking for was to pretty this up a little bit, and so you don't throw trees away. We just put them over here, and that takes care of both problems. And everything else on the other side is...
Problem is that these aren't the trees that are interrupting their mowing, because they're not the ones mowing this side, they live on this.
They are mowing.
So, do you want all of them gone, though? Because if we only take these ones...
No, this one's fine, because they can get, use the sidewalks.
Okay.
To go around these trees on this side.
You just can't get around them?
It's not even wide enough to get a mower up there.
Oh, so you're going into the road, and then around, and then into the road?
They have to go up the curb, go down, up, down, up, down.
Gotcha.
So, it would just be this side. Relocate them to here, so we don't lose anything.
Six trees?
Yeah, whatever it is.
I don't know how many are actually in the ground, but there's six on the plan.
Okay, and that's perfect. Scatter them in there, solves two problems. So, everybody following that?
You are right about that, John.
I'm writing it down. What I'd like to do is give him maybe a sketch showing, you know, what we wanna do here.
Yeah.
And we're also planning a meeting on site with Wallace to go over these things.
Okay, yeah, site's good. Yeah, because we gotta, we gotta go on next on Tony's...
Okay, there's no one that's gonna be, okay, so we can be there.
But we're trying to coordinate it now, remember the emails we got on the weekend.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so, um, alright, so there's the trees. The cul-de-sac lighting, that, we leave that up to the town of Groveland, supposed to be two lights. They can go anywhere where the transformers are, it's their call. Have you been in contact with them? Okay.
Everything's underground.
Right, right, so the transformer pad's right there, you just, they just put it right there.
Okay.
Yeah, so, as long as the pad's there, they want ten tap and go. So, and did they put that in, the one light, did you put it in?
Who's they?
Uh, power company, Groveland.
I, I wasn't involved in the construction.
It got put in the same day as the trees, so...
Do you know who, you didn't see, see if it was town of Groveland trucks, was it?
I didn't, I don't.
Okay, well, that's it. If you could check with the town, just, just ask them over there, because there are supposed to be two lights on the street. The other one can go right where the transformer pad is.
Okay.
To light up the cul-de-sac. The other one is, is, is good there, and then, separate, it's not your subdivision street, but it is a turnout.
The plan is showing for two?
It, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So, out here, and this would be up to the town of Groveland's light department.
Shows.
Um, the entrance, there's a pole there, they could put one of their own, this is not yours, this would be just the light department, because they're using those new LED lights, so they're really, really nice. And they would just attach it to the existing telephone pole right there. So, that's their bag. You can check with them on that other, that other light post down at the end of the cul-de-sac where the transformer pad is.
Okay, they have a copy of the plan too, I mean, they would've seen.
Yeah, they wait, though, till, you know, I mean, they don't put them in right away, so, I mean, they get through one-on-one, and then you just gotta, it's up to them when they put them in, so, onto that. Alright, so there's the lighting there. Road drainage is, is what we're talking about, the crown. What's, uh, what was Woody's fix? Just a, a skim?
We don't have a cliff deck, so we're waiting for Bob Arakalian mainly to chime in on that.
Yeah. What would you suggest as a, I mean, to me, it's, it just sounds like you throw another layer on of a crown, and that should do it.
They're gonna grind it.
Oh, you're gonna grind?
Some grinding in the middle.
Yeah, it'd be some grinding, get to the catch bases.
Oh.
And the catch bases left.
Well, grind in place isn't bad, if it stays, that gives it a better road, so...
Grind, grind, and then grind.
Yeah, just pave over, that's easy.
Well, it's not easy to raise the manholes, but they'll have to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
To crown it.
As long, well, if they brick them, it'd be a little bit easier. I mean, our, our reg shows they have a three-layer brick system on them, so they can...
They have that.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, it's work, but it could be a lot worse.
Right.
Plus, it'll make the road stronger, and then Bobby would be happy about that, and, um, residents will be too.
I love, I love this.
Meeting that we're talking about having on site.
Yeah. Do you know, I mean, that just, just does not look like finished coat. That looks like three-quarters stone. Doesn't it?
It is a little strange.
Yeah, okay, because, yeah, I'm looking at that, and we're, it's like, oh, man, and even the sidewalks look, you know, like really rough stuff, not the usual finish.
True.
It was just an observation. I mean, if they're built and they got lashed, but it's usually not that, not that big rock, stone mix that's in there, so... Looks like somebody had some extra binder mix, and they just kinda threw it out there. Alright, so that answers that.
We also wiped out my survey, and I had to redo it. We, we realized there were problems with those, and we never stamped it finally.
Yeah, I saw the bounds, they, they look nice, got them right, right at the right height, and...
Yeah, well, we gotta reposition a few.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, oh, yeah, so you probably may or may not know us about that. While I was out there walking today, okay, a lot of the fill that was brought in is got glass in and other things. Wait, any idea where that came from?
No.
Okay, what's the solution to that? We, we're supposed to have six inches of topsoil on there. Is there a solution in the mix that we got that much debris?
I have no solution to that.
Who took over the lots? Was it the builder, or is it still under the...
That was Green.
That was Green. Green put that stuff down, and when it came in, yeah, it was, it was lots of stuff.
We're falling it out by like the can, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did a walk, and we picked up three pieces, and it was just, you know, going down to check out that outlet.
I don't know where he got it from, but it's garbage.
So, who's, who's responsible for that? Because the solution to that is to bring in a couple of inches and blanket it, and, and, and be done with it. But whose, whose dime is that? That's my question. Where did the liability switch over? From the town's perspective, it, it's the, it's a developer, but I don't know what agreement transpired when these lots were sold out, and then the, and then the poor house builder picked it up to save the place.
Well, what, what we'll do is we'll leave it on the list and bring it up with the landscaper who did the work.
Who did the landscaping?
Wallace was doing some landscaping as well, he planted the trees.
Yeah, but I mean, him himself, or, or his sub?
No, his sub.
Okay.
I forget exactly what the chronology was, but for some reason I remember Green did a lot, a lot of the walnut seed. But Wallace took over and did a lot of the tree work in the right of way and the paving, of course.
Yeah, and, and whatever soil is there is thin, because, I mean, there's, there's large outcroppings of ledge and, I mean-
So the fix that would make the most sense would be to bring in some lower-
No, that would do, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like another four inches or something, and just cover everything and redo everything.
That's simple. Yeah, conceived.
But there's always problems finding the right one, you never know what you can get.
Yeah, you have to find some screened stuff, um, there's places that have some pretty good stuff, reasonably priced.
That's the hard part, finding the sort of-
I don't know, what is, does Larry still do screen?
Larry.
Does he do it?
He's got plenty.
Yeah.
Oh, shut the mountain downer.
Yep.
Yeah. Look up, you know, not, not to give him any business, but we haven't heard about complaints about any of that stuff going through. But yeah, you can't, I mean, I feel bad for the kids, they go outside, they cut their feet, and this is, you know, brand new house.
Other thing to do before they bring anything else in, I tell you, it's gonna work its way right back up, is, is rake the hell out of the lawn.
We've gone out there three times since we moved in, raking and-
Could do a york rake.
We're still finding like coffee cans.
A york raking around the, swing it around and then just take out what you can before the-
They took out probably more than they brought in.
Should solve the problem.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna tell you what they took out, but I thought that was the worst of the worst that went out.
Oh, yeah, that shiny stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot about that. That was over on that right-hand side.
It was a road. It was a road.
That was, that was kinda bizarre, okay.
It was like around the same time that they were doing a scene or whatever. But that's a degree from him.
I, I, I don't know where they got it, you know, it's, 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 with Scott Green, it could be gotten, no.
Yeah, it's gonna be anything.
He could have dug up something two blocks away, brought it in.
You don't need the streetlights, you're fine.
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking, we must stand up some.
Okay, um-
I, I hate to tell you, I dig up prehistoric bones and everything in my backyard in Elm Park, I mean, they didn't have any place to take the trash, so they buried it. They dug holes and they buried it. You'd be surprised what I found, you know, so.
Okay, um, site, site distance as you exit, which, which is where, one of the reasons why I went and talked to Groveland Light about having them throw a light on that pole right there, that's, would be theirs. Site distance, what's the radius on that? I remember that was a problem, and then one of the things, a- as you're coming out here in the ninety, and this is right where Tony's, Tony's property is too. And, and one of the things that just needs a resolve, and, and I'm not sure what it was, the final resolve, but were you on board, do you remember this house in the corner, this first A and R? Where that driveway was supposed to relocate off of here?
I wasn't involved in those discussions, but I remember it.
Remember it, okay. So, there, there just needs to be a, a nail in the coffin resolve to that, because what the homeowner wa- was willing to do was, he, he didn't care if he accessed on to Sunset Circle. Even though his, his driveway in front is shifted over according to the original plan, that's how that, and they wanted that A and R so they could get the money, put that house up. And that's how we ended up with a site distance problem, and that's why this road shifted, if you remember, because they put the house too close, and everything kinda shifted over. So, um, I would like to, as, as one board member, just see the resolve to whatever happened here with the discussions with this guy, because he did do some repaving, was that you guys? There was him, okay. So he, he was saying, well, rather than go right through and, and access through, which is what, what was supposed to happen, his driveway, it could stay there, but he was supposed to have a driveway on Sunset because of the site distance issues and the traffic, you know, backing out and going in. Uh, and that was all pre-planned on the, on the original plans. But I think that he was satisfied with, instead of putting pavement going out onto Sunset, just widening out something here for the same amount of footage, and I don't know if that happened. And he's, and he's a happy clam, so that, that's something that just needs to be resolved to put the end of that issue, whatever it was.
He does, the guy that lives there now doesn't want it.
Well, that's what he, that's what he said before, but then he said he didn't know, and then he said, well, you know what? Get over there, he says, and then I can just park there, he says, you know, going through if my frontage was supposed to switch over, he says, but I parked vehicles here, and I would just use that as a spot, instead of parking on my lawn, I would park it on the, on the roadway, on the driveway. So, I don't know what he finally ended up deciding, but it'd be nice to just figure that out, onto that. And then site distance here, it's, it's a problem turning out because of what? The scrub?
Some of the shrubs at the end.
So right where the pole is, the telephone pole?
It is, it is over.
On the telephone, turn left.
Yeah, so it's in the right of way on Salem.
I can't see around that telephone pole, like, and I have to pull out.
That's town, town of Groveland, and, yeah, it's in the right of way. So, um, now, it's an interesting point on that, because I don't know if you remember this, but Bobby was always eyeing that the center line of the road was off. Because it was referenced, he was referencing that pole, and he kept standing out here, and goes, there's something goofy about this corner. And, uh, Arakalian, and he was, was nuts trying to figure it out, and it turned out there was something, there was something off with it, the way Scott had brought in the utilities. So he, he spotted it, but we couldn't get a, we couldn't figure out what it was. So, because I think the pole was supposed to be in some other location or, or something, but if it's scrub around there, that's the town's, so that's, it's still near the sidewalk, I know what he's talking about, as I, as I came out today.
I don't know, how bad is it now? I think they hit the corner like when they were moving.
Well, I will, I kinda like stand up when I pull out.
Yeah, that's-
Not the best solution?
That's, that's a town issue, that's, that's what he's guessed, so.
I'll ask a silly question, but I mean, is that something, is there enough of a curb there where you guys can put a mirror across the roadways and you can see around the curb?
You know, that's a good question for Bob.
I mean, that's not our responsibility.
No, that's Bob's, yes, the town of Groveland Highway Department, not the, not the planning board, unless it's a site distance radius issue.
Coming, you know, you know, the C cars coming down.
Certainly wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I mean, we've done stuff like that before, and, and we've done buffer zones, but, um, judging from what I saw coming out of there, I think it, just the highway department got up there and just cut down some of those branches, that would, that would fix it. Um, so that you could, you could see around the corner. Uh, because this road was supposed to be further that way, towards Chesterton. And because they goofed this house, everything shifted, which probably made your life miserable.
Yeah, well, I'm still here.
Yeah, so, going through. Alright, so, and the property markers, he was just saying? Individual property markers or bounds on your list?
More just bounds for us, I think we had someone come take a look at it, you know, to put in property markers off the back, but we had something go on.
Yeah, see, all the property markers are supposed to be in.
They, they're in, we have to reposition three.
Okay, so, not just on the front side, right, you know, all around each lot.
What happened was Bill Holt showed up on their lot.
What was he doing there?
We hired him to survey it.
He did the original surveying.
He did the original septic survey.
You didn't have to pay him for that, did you?
Not paid him to date.
Okay, so what's the fix? Which, who's, you're, you're gonna go out and resurvey it.
You guys have to set the bounds.
We're gonna reanalyze the monuments to-
And you're gonna pay us, right?
Woody's comments.
Okay.
According to Woody's notes, you have three markers as you went through the road on that, on that radius.
Ooh.
That needs to be repositioned.
At the end of the cul-de-sac, or the?
At the beginning of the road, at Salem Street.
Okay.
Well, that explains what Bobby was talking about.
No, no, Bob's talking about the telephone pole, I think the telephone pole was supposed to be moved.
Yeah.
And it wasn't. But, on the left-hand side coming in, those, those are the monuments that are out of sync.
Oh, so that, well, that explains the shift.
We never finally certified those.
Okay.
Because we knew we had an issue.
Yeah.
Cammott received the plan informally, and he went up and re-surveyed it.
Okay.
Would like to get his drawing file, but he sent us a PDF. Grasso and I went out to deal with the GPS. But there's been so much analysis put into this, I'm gonna do it one more time perfectly, and I'm gonna put it to bed.
Okay. Now, so the individual property bounds are supposed to be in. It's all part of the subdivision and those-
To the rear of the lots away from the road?
Yeah, all of them, all the pins have to be in prior to, so, I mean, I'm sure they were once upon a time, so-
I think they still are.
Okay, good. So if they're still there, and if they're just got buried, do you guys have the magnetometer you can go?
We will try to flag them.
Yeah. Flag them, and then get your can of orange spray paint out.
And Bill added one, I noticed, in the, in the drainage, isn't it?
Yep, he marked, um, where, how far the drainage, isn't it, comes out?
Okay.
I don't know if you left a rod on that angle point, but I believe all the other corners have monuments. There aren't that many.
So who, who else is missing pins?
We have, we have.
Wow.
And I know there's something-
You just don't know where they are.
Right.
Okay, so why don't we just, um, maybe you can do a scan, and they're, they're just buried, like, usually they just get covered over, because you pinned them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so they're, and how far did you go down with them? Four feet, five feet?
We leave them flush so you can mow over them.
Right, but how?
Oh, three feet.
Yeah, so they still, should still be there, they just got covered, I hope, so.
I haven't revisited the real lot lines lately, I can do that.
Okay, so, if, rebar five eights, was it, yeah, so it's-
A couple of them are in the, in the sidewalk, because the sidewalk was missing.
Yeah, okay, I mean, the backsides and the sidelines, it's still like that. So you get a, you get a three-foot, five-eighths rod that was pounded in the earth, but during the construction, trees, dirt, rocks, everything piles over. So, so they might, there's a good chance they're still there, that he's saying?
Everything wasn't, nothing was disturbed to the rear of the lots.
Okay, so then those should just be vegetation, yeah.
Yeah, I walked in the back, I've never seen it, but I don't know how far back the property line goes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll find that out for you.
And then it's right by the house where the utility things are, between four, two and four.
Those are over here.
Yeah, now, here's like a stick, and somebody's dropped like red paint on it, what is that stick for?
That's the marker.
That's a marker?
It's in the middle of the yard.
I mean, can I, can they paint it so it like all my color? I mean, it looks like-
Was that one the trailer?
It's not a bound, is it? What is it?
They dropped a marker.
It's a marker here.
It's in the middle of the yard. Right, you're the one that's in the middle of the yard, and then there's a bunch in the middle of the yard over here too.
That was supposed to be a point on line during construction.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so they can come out.
Oh, is it a stake? A wooden stake?
No, it's just a stick that's crooked. Yeah, it's, we have a stake.
It's a two-by-four?
There's a stake between yours, a wooden stake, and then between ours is like the wooden two-by-fours sticking up.
And somebody spilled red paint all over the top, and it dripped down, and, and just a sore eye.
If it's not a, it's not a point, uh, yank it out of there.
We've been focusing mainly on the right of way.
Right.
Yeah, okay, alright, so-
Is there a marker where the septic tank is?
I wasn't involved with the septic.
It's probably a manhole, I mean, you got a septic plan, right?
No, you probably don't have a marker where the septic tank is.
If you, if you don't have a septic plan, you can go to the, uh, Board of Health, and they will give you a asphalt of the septic plan and where your tank is and everything.
Did you, you didn't do septics? Wait a minute, who did?
Bill Holt.
Bill Holt, he did the asphalt.
Oh, did he? Wow.
And Rick Green grabbed the guy, uh, Sawatka.
Was Holt and Grasso still working on that?
No.
Just, okay.
They're not working together anymore.
Yeah, but they were when they started this.
About one.
Okay. Oh, gosh. Wow, the players continue. See what happens when you're on twenty-five, twenty-six years, everybody comes around here. So, okay, so that, that's your list, right? Everybody happy with, with that list? Okay, now we got Tony.
Yeah.
So, let's see a detail, do you have a detail sheet for Tony's? So, let's, let's see what we got here.
Okay, that's up to the lot line.
Oh, it's in, yeah, he has a list.
Okay, so, so here's Tony's line, okay. So, one of the many things that was discussed, and it was, was that along Tony's property line into here, and I'm not sure how far back that went, that's a question. Okay, was going to be a two-foot rock wall, two feet above grade. Okay, and it kinda transitioned down in here to the point, Tony, I don't remember where that ended, that was the-
It ends right about where the trees are.
Okay, so that, I don't know how many feet that is, rough guess.
It was basically from tree line to the tree line.
Okay, and then, it was actually, I think Jim, that had suggested, okay, the white vinyl fence or someone, a fence, and then somebody switched it to a white vinyl fence, and it was gonna go in front of this rock wall, so that if snow hit it, the rock wall would be behind it. So Tony, you know, would be seeing a two-foot wall on his property side there, and then the fence goes in over to there for the same amount of distance. Okay, and, and that's where that was. So that's the question of where it is, and then where does it lie from the right of way to Tony's property, and that's always been there, that's always been, Scott Green promised that, the other guy promised that, that, all of that, it's always been there. So where is that, and what's the fix?
What, what happened though, it was a lot of discussion about the wall.
Yeah, but not a retaining wall, this was a decorative wall, not a retaining wall.
Yeah, so, so what happened is we wound up with a small rock wall, but it wasn't along, um, it wasn't along Sunset dra- circle, it was towards the back of the lot. Because we were gonna grade back there, we were trying to get three to one slope. So I have a copy of that definitive plan.
Okay, so was this-
They were putting it here.
But that was going on my land, which I'm against.
What's, what's, what's the stability of the property now?
They're gonna do what they want on early.
Alright, so, so if this didn't go in, and the rock wall and the fence went up the front, and everybody has signed off on it, it's the same price, and they're easier to bill.
There's no more discussion of this situation here.
See this rock wall? That's the only rock wall that was approved by the definitive plan. Mind you, it was very expensive, it went for review for like-
Right, right.
For like six months about how we were gonna-
Because it was a big retaining wall with a bridge that was going in there initially on this stuff, the way back.
Beginning.
Right.
And this is what we resolved through all the iterations of review. And this is grading onto Tony's site, which Tony does not want now.
Okay, so that's fine.
Now you're looking at that.
Okay, so, so if the land has stabilized, and he doesn't want that particular wall there, but that's what's showing on the plan. Then do a mod, okay, because Scott Green promised the two-foot wall, and the board wanted the, the vinyl fence up and for, the, the only question I have is, I don't know how many exact feet that was. You know, and, and onto that, but that solves both problems. You don't have to build the big expensive thing on that, he doesn't have to go on to this grade, Tony gets his two-foot decorative wall, and then the fence, the vinyl fence goes.
Well, we voted on this.
We, we didn't vote any-
Last meeting, yes, we did.
You weren't here.
We voted, you weren't here, we voted on it.
So we bring it up for a vote again, because, because you weren't here.
We already voted, we voted for a vinyl fence with, we, we went around and around.
See the property line, they're doing everything.
Yeah, we just talked about it, so that's more money.
You weren't here for doing.
So that's more money, but Bob, you, you weren't here.
Back and forth on this.
Bob, you weren't here on these subdivisions, and this is the landowner.
I know I wasn't here on the subdivision.
And this is the landlord, and this is a, this is a cheaper fix. This is a cheaper fix, so we're trying to nail this down as to, to what, what's, what, what Tony wants to get in there, what, what was promised to the board. And we certainly don't need to build this gigantic retaining plan wall, what's the cost of that? That if you had put that-
The grading?
Yeah, for that whole plan and in here with the big, huge wall and everything, if you guys put that in, what would that cost?
So what, to refresh your memory, boy, that, we had this, uh, letter, it was a deal behind the scenes, prior to the approval of the definitive plan.
But that's not valid.
Is this the one that his wife signed? Yeah, yeah, this disappeared and then it came back again, yeah.
Yeah, but that's not valid.
This, by the, by the end of it, this is what we approved.
Right, so how much is-
Everybody was gonna build, and now he doesn't want the grading on the site.
Okay, so what is that, what is that?
It costs more now to remobile this, to get out there to do the work.
Okay, but what is the, what was the work forecast? I'm trying to come up with a medium fix and, and-
Know what it cost to do this?
Right.
We'll have to-
Okay, rough guess.
Two guys, one day, trucking it some home and spreading it out. You know, it's two thousand dollars.
Okay, so, and the vinyl fence thing, what was, what was the, the footage? That's what I'm trying to figure out, because I don't know that footage at all.
The vinyl fence was us trying to appease and, and-
Well, the vinyl fence was up here for the board because of the snow. Right around the cor- it was only up here for a little bit of distance, it was, it was from the rounding corner down, and Tony put a tree line to tree line, but I don't, do, do you know how far that is, Tony?
No, I don't.
It's about a hundred feet.
But-
A hundred feet, that seems long.
But let me say this, the vinyl wall was the, the vinyl fence was a replacement for the stone wall that was originally on the plan, that was like eight feet high.
Oh, that was the bridge plan, right, so the bridge plan came out.
Scotty didn't want that.
Yeah.
So, he says to me, so we talked and talked, and I says, well, how about a fence in place of the wall? He says, that's it, I'll put the vinyl fence on.
Right, and then Jim pointed out that we needed a two-foot or some wall behind it so that the fence didn't get knocked over when the snow hit it coming through.
That would have been needed if we had left the-
The bank.
The bank.
The banking way.
The banking ways.
Now, when you're gonna put the carpet grass down, you're not gonna-
Okay, I understand, I understand that issue, and I understand everything stables out, so what, what we're trying to do here is, and, and and there was a lot of discussion with Tony on this, there was a lot of discussion with Scott, this is the same part of the discussion that we're, you know, the house moved, the driveway moved, and there's a lot of stuff that kinda messed up here. So, so we're trying to come up with something that is going to appease Tony, not cost an arm and a leg, not do work on the backside that we don't need to do. But we do need to do some aesthetics work, and we did talk about the fence coming around the corner here. But, but Tony, you also, at the same time, the board has gone over around the stuff a couple of times, and so we're trying to nail this down as, as to specifically, and then we can pitch it, and we can look at it on the site, which I think is important that we have, that everybody be present for that.[1743.84]
Didn't you come up with a, a, a solution for this?
I did, last time, which is what this is. We've already discussed this multiple times, and this is the solution. So, a vinyl fence goes here, there's no wall, no wall is needed, because there's, there's no grading issue, it's, there's no wall. So, vinyl fence from here, behind the arboretis, to here, the edge of your property line. Nothing touches your property, everything is on the other side of the property line.
You had the box.
It's eight foot, no.
No.
It's an eight-foot high fence, it's an eight-foot high fence, from the level of your grass to where that is, it's going to be above the edge of the roadway. So you're not gonna see anything, it's not gonna be headlights in your yard, it's none of that. This plan, two to one slope, which I know you keep saying is too steep, but is a perfectly acceptable slope for construction, we do it all the time. It's gonna have this product on it that is essentially just growing grass that you could never grow yourself, and it will stabilize that slope. Slope's already stabilized, but that's what they're going to continue to put there, so that it stays stabilized. That and the fence, you're not gonna have things washing down the slope, it's not gonna push the fence over, you don't need a wall to hold the fence up. The fence itself will be fine on that slope. So the fence and this carpet grass is the perfect solution, this is what we voted on last time, it's what we voted on the time before. There's no wall needed in any part of this to do any sort of anything, it's not gonna hold anything. I know you don't believe me, but this is my job, I'm an engineer, and I am telling you that this is fine.
How high's the fence?
Eight foot high.
Six feet?
Eight feet high.
Eight?
No, six.
No, it's, it's, it's.
Six, six, and that's right, and from the grade where you are.
Eight feet long, eight, six high.
Yes.
Well, eight for them panels, it's longer than eight feet. And from where it, where it will fall on that slope to where the top of the roadway is, it sits above it, so you're not gonna see.
I know, but is there gonna be grass on that other side?
There's grass on the other side of the fence.
On the other side?
So, your property line is here.
Yeah.
The fence is going on this side, and from this side of the fence up the, up the hill to the roadway, it's grass.
All grass.
All grass. There's no rock, there's nothing, it's all grass. And it's actually already pretty much established that way now, but they're gonna reestablish it. It, I mean, it's already stabilized, there's nothing washing down there now.
Can you show me?
But there's all those wood chips, the wood chips are gone?
The wood chips are gonna become grass.
They'll be removed and it's grass.
The grass.
So it's here to here?
Yes, which is where the biggest slope issue is.
The only thing that the two-foot wall was mentioned, and I'm not sure our placement was, um, it, it wasn't gonna be meant for, for erosion or anything like that, it was gonna be initially put in as a two-foot, uh, rock wall aesthetics, and then the fence was gonna go in front of it.
Well, you don't even need the aesthetics anymore, cause there's a tree line there.
Not aesthetics, it was from his property looking at.
Right.
Something Bob, it's something Bob O'Hanley came up with and told me could work in that area, if you just left the wood chips.
Okay, so, so I'm just, I'm just doing history here?
We're not seeing any problems anyhow.
That's, that's what I mean, so, so I'm going through this and explaining this to Tony, the history, cause I wanna, I wanna walk, walk along with him on it. This is, this is what she suggested on the fence, so the fence would go in, this, the big thick blocks that you were thinking about way back, which was a retaining wall, which kind of got modified after, I don't know, revision forty on this plan, was, was all back here, cause this was supposed to be a bridge at one point, it was supposed to be a very large bridge crossing in this on the original plan. That didn't come into play when everything shifted, one lot came out and, and Scott Green took over. So, um, so that's changed, so what the board has come up with on this fix is you get your fence, the chips come out, the grass goes in to stabilize. It's already stabilized, I saw that today. The question that, the only question that I have, do you understand why this is, what is happening is here, so you still get the fence, you get a grass area to stabilize. The wall that we all talked about, that you're thinking of, and not the retaining wall, the big retaining wall was humongous, it was big blocks, was a decorative wall, stone wall, and the fence was gonna go in front of it, but the fence looks like from the initial plan, which was supposed to be around this corner, has now slid down for some reason, I'm not sure why that, why that is. But do you understand what the, what you're trying to say?
It's down low instead of up where the trees are.
Right, so, currently the subdivision is built, you've seen traffic going in and out. Are there any concerns with shading, lights, noise, anything, cause that's typically what the fence and the buffer trees and everything afford. We kind of shield that out, cause your house was there first, obviously. So, what have you experienced, is there any, any of that going on?
No.
Okay.
Only that the fact the whole area is wide open.
That's where the fence would go.
Yep.
There's no privacy for me in my back.
So that, so that's where the fence would go for a hundred feet, you said?
A little longer than this.
Okay, so, so along from, from where she's saying, it looks like midpoint, all the way down to the back of the property line.
It's like a hundred and.
Is that, do you understand that? And we can show you that.
Fifteen, now, a hundred feet.
But I want you to understand what the board's talking about, and why this gigantic thing that you were concerned about is no longer going in? That big huge honking wall that was supposed to be there, that's not gonna be there. So, so they're not gonna go on your property, they're not gonna put all that, those big stones in, so you don't have to worry about that. That's not gonna be there.
They're not even putting dirt on your property, nothing's going on.
So, so you won't have erosion, cause you don't have it now, but you are gonna get your fence. And we're gonna show you where that is on the sidewalk. Is that acceptable to you?
It's gonna be grass, not wood.
Yeah, so you're gonna have, instead of those wood chips, it's gonna be grass.
I have no alternative, do I?
Well, it's, it's, this is, this is what the purpose was, and the purpose of the rock wall was decorative and only to kind of balance the fence if the snow hit it, that was it. It was gonna, the fence was gonna be street-side.
Well, there's gonna be leaves and everything that are gonna gather on the inside of that wall from that slope. There's gonna be quite a few leaves.
You mean on the, on the fence side?
No more than would exist there now, though, it's not, the, the pie, the force of the leaves aren't gonna push that fence back.
What's gonna happen, the way it is now, the leaves are blowing on my property.
Right.
A lot more than, once I get a fence there, you're right, it's gonna cut down on some of the leaves, but the leaves it's cutting down are gonna be on the inside of that fence. And you're saying it's not gonna cause any damage to that fence, the buildup of leaves over time?
No, it's plastic fence.
I've got a vinyl fence all around my property, okay, I don't have any problems with it at all.
I can show you a twenty-year-old corral fence that's, looks mint when, after it rains, cause the dirt washes off it, um, done on every green. Um, the vinyl ones will stay, if they're put in, if they're put in properly, they'll stay, unless somebody hits it, and then it just cracks, and then they get replaced. But, but, so, so do you understand this, so everybody's on the same page, and we'll show you this, we're gonna show you this when we do the sidewalk, we'll actually get out there, you know, string it or something, so you understand where this goes. Because they got a good fix here, okay, but I want you to understand that this, this rock wall that everybody talked about isn't gonna be there, okay? And the only question that I had was, was the initial stone decorative wall was up here, and it was to hold the fence, but things have changed on this plan, I'm not sure why. But if you don't need the rock wall, there's no sense putting it in, cause.
Fence is gonna be secured enough that no pressure on it will bother it, snow or what.
No, and it's not, no, because it's set far enough back, they're not plowing snow against it, so it's just whatever snow falls.
You got about six feet.
Right.
Right.
They're not pushing any snow against it.
No, no, no.
It's a least it is.
And, um, typically they're installed with a small gap at the bottom, so things are still draining under, so like, it's not, it's not like sunken in the ground.
Right, right.
You shouldn't have any buildup. Honestly, vinyl fence is the way to go, wooden fences are much more prone to damage, cause they rot and they.
And you gotta paint them. They're painted.
Leave them rotten, but yes.
None of that. So, so we'll string this out on the sidewalk, so you're comfortable with that, okay, so, um, you know, she's got a good sketch over here, so can we eliminate all the, the talk and installation of the wall stuff? Is everybody, are you, Tony, you're the one that has to decide this?
I guess so.
Okay, you're, and you're comfortable with this, okay, is, is everyone here on the board comfortable with a little slide of the fence? If it has to slide one way or another way, or we gotta add another panel?
That's not a problem.
Okay, is everybody, okay, good, so, so, alright, so if we have to slide a little bit to meet what you're looking to do, and if maybe another panel's gonna be added, you know, within reason, everybody's on the same page with that, okay?
Yep.
Alright, so that, that should take care of that, but we'll be there, and we'll, we'll make sure this goes, okay?
The rest of our list is covered by the resident list.
Okay. So is any, are you all set with that?
Yeah, you think the wall is good?
Fence.
The fence.
I mean, the fence, I'm sorry.
I would, I would say maybe nothing, but if you want the fence.
The fence, I can see what he's talking about.
We're eliminating this wall?
Yes, that's the one that's gonna be gone, there's no walls in the back anymore.
Yeah, that's.
Cause that was a pretty scary-looking, you know, contraption there, I mean.
The big wall?
The big, I mean, we thought it was gonna be a drubbery, yeah, I mean, it, it had the footings for it, it was enormous. You know, you could have run a train through the bottom of it, it was, it was that substantial. Um, that's when we first looked at that.
That was related to the K value with the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, so, and it was longer than anything else. Yeah, okay, so.
There's no stripe on the inside of that wall, is there?
No.
I don't know where they are.
No, it's, it's literally the wood chips that exist there now are gonna get trucked out, and then they're gonna put down this, it's, um, it's like a carpet that they are gonna, and the grass takes hold.
Yeah, the way Scotty and I, that six-foot wall, then near the ends it would taper down a little bit, cause of the trees and so.
It's a panel, the, uh, the decorative panel of the, the fence, you mean, Tony?
Huh?
You're talking the fence, how, the decorator side, yeah, they have a, a slope, and a.
A taper.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have to make note of that.
Yeah, it's just a, so it doesn't look, kind of flows with the tree, so that's easy, okay, thank you. Everybody, we, we got this nailed?
Are we done?
Okay, okay, so that's good.
John, when you have a date set, just walk through, walk through, everything is.
I'll, I'll get that and let everybody know.
I make a motion that Tony agree that there will be no wall and it'll be a vinyl fence now.
We just did that.
We'll not come back.
That's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Thank you. How's that?
Okay, yeah.
Second it?
Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay.
Nope, I'm, I'm favorable to that.
Aye.
Just have the slide if we have to, but yeah, let's, let's get that out. So, alright, so you're good, we're good.
Yes.
Thank you for coming in and working with us here.
And this is yours, that please doodle bomb.
I would love to get this off your hands and our hands, and.
Yes.
Yes, have a good night.
Be so nice. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Uh, here, do a little.
Well.
Or did you have something else?
Well, let me, let me talk about legal.
Oh, okay.
Legal, okay.
Oh, yeah, he is, okay.
Okay.
DeHul is here, so.
No, he is here, okay.
Okay.
They're outside.
Yes, please.
Legal is gonna come in in October sometime.
Okay.
The site plan, he's changing what he's gonna do, it's gonna be two buildings.
Okay.
And it's gonna be a situation that it's just gonna be storage there, no, nothing going on in the building.
Like self-storage, or just his personal, like, it's a warehouse kind of thing?
It would be rentable, rentable storage, yeah, so.
You're welcome.
Yeah. They would know, right?
What's that?
No, she was, she was just questioning, you know where, right?
That's, that's all approved and everything, that's filling in the, um, pit, the lit pit out back.
Are they gonna build back there?
He doesn't know.
Oh, he doesn't know?
He just.
Yes, it don't, it appeared to me that there was a wall.
All he has to do, has the permit is to do is fill it and get the, uh, gully out.
Oh, oh.
Can you fill?
We see a giant roll of plants here.
It's not, they have permits.
Oh, it isn't?
It's all, it's all permitted and everything.
Oh, okay.
Subdivision, um, true.
He's talking about.
The one that's.
The couple of houses, two or three houses. They came, they came in for. They came in for the A and R in the lot lines already.
Yeah, this was the one that, was the new house that's up there right now in Washington, is that?
I'm not. We'll put this in applause and then. We're not finding anything, it's goddamn M O D.
About.
For.
Spring about what?
At what we agreed to and what would be taken out.
That's on the site, um, site removal, earth removal, um, decision.
Sure.
There's a, there's a separate earth removal plan.
We need to find it.
And there's a document that Phil has, too.
Even if there, even if there wasn't, the plans themselves dictate what the grades are. So even if for some reason there wasn't, the plans itself.
This thing also mentions, you know, meetings.
Yeah.
You know, and it's like, yeah, we didn't get anything.
You had to fast forward instead of stop.
Nope.
There's gonna be a nice gap.
So Dina, what are you in for? What do you got there? What is? Okay.
Land off of Sam Street, you know where we built the house on Sam Street next to Joe Knight's garage?
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's a lot next to it.
Where, where is? Yeah, I got that.
This is where we just built the house.
Right.
This is what we're, we're putting in for a road and basically two lots, so a two lot.
And then what's this and this?
This is, this is the balance of that land that we purchased from the.
Okay, so just so you know, you gotta do a, a build-out plan?
My house is right here.
Okay, you gotta, you gotta submit a build-out, max build-out plan, including these, per the reg?
A max build-out plan.
Yeah, in other words, you have to show what the development's gonna be on this, even though you may not be doing it right now, but because you own the land.
Well, how do we know, what, what we're gonna do?
Well, you gotta, your engineer does, it's part of the regulation. So, so you go by, by zoning? But yeah, you have to, you have to put a max build-out plan, because that's gonna dictate what type of road this is, how wide it is, the infrastructure, how deep it is, uh, whether. What's that?
Doesn't seem fair, who says that I wanna ever develop anything in my best of my life?
The regulation states that, if you're, if you're a butters in the land, you have to show a max, it doesn't say you have to show an engineering plan, you can bring it in.
I wanna do all this, I don't, or if I don't have to.
I've been here twenty-six years, I can tell, can I tell you how many times that maybe you guys didn't do it, but someone else did, we just had a plan in here.
What if I do, what's a bit about?
It's part of the reg.
Well, it all goes together.
Yeah, if you, it's a cartoon, it's not, you don't have to put big engineering into it.
But you got land in between.
But Bill, who did this plan?
It all goes together, so.
Bill, so Bill knows this.
Affordable housing.
Bill knows that you gotta supply.
Affordable housing.
Yeah.
And that's all it's about.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not an engineered plan, it's literally how many houses could I fit?
How many houses could I ever fit up there?
If I wanted to, yeah.
That's where, that's where you're gonna have to Tony up some money.
Never actually built.
Right.
That's not part of what we're doing here tonight.
It's part of the submission.
I don't, they could still submit this as.
Now, is this a conceptual plan or preliminary plan?
Okay, but then the rest.
So where's, did you submit as conceptual plan?
If we don't explain it upfront, you know, it's gonna be a problem.
So you're winning it, so there's no conceptual plan for the subdivision plan?
No.
Okay, so you're coming in with a plan, missing the max build-up plan, but you can submit that later, um, during the, during the process, so let's see what it is. And do you have all your forms and?
How many of these do you need?
Two hundred and fifty-five.
We're gonna need six, six, six copies, one goes to the clerk, the form is, and you got this on for?
You're the last one, so we're.
Jim, you, you got this on for this, right? Acceptance of a plan?
Yeah, we're, we're, it's a two-lot subdivision, they're filing.
Okay.
It's, it's all they're doing, okay, they're not doing anything else, so.
No, so just need, can I see the forms? The, the.
Little ones?
Nope.
Application.
Yeah, the total application and.
And money.
Take a little left, yeah.
So you haven't moved at seven to six?
Seven to six.
So if they've been out there working at eight o'clock at night, then we gotta stop that, seven to six is our noisy minute. It doesn't say anything about Saturdays being different hours, but.
No. I didn't, I didn't think Saturday was work.
I thought there was no, and they're saying it was at the discretion of the board, but.
I'll look inside the other reg.
I know they couldn't stop.
Those would be fine, those are just little handouts, but.
Yeah, but start before seven is always taken with a grain of salt, because it's always them loading up and fueling and backing up.
They can call police and that was.
Right, and it, and it doesn't have to be an engineered plan, it, he can do it on the CAD, so you figure out the zoning out there, and then you figure out the land and just go click. Cause you, I mean, you know, it's gonna show thirty houses, but you're not gonna get a foot thirty houses, but we need to know as a max build-out plan, what are, what are we looking at? Now, here's a question. The folks that are, because this, this driveway's, this road access is going to the right side. So the site distance is gonna be key here to that, um, to that intersection, the way this comes in.
Thinking none of the neighbors are gonna be, what the hell's this noise, it's like the ocean?
Right, right. Site distance for the subdivision?
And, yeah, I got that call, I was like, oh, great.
Just because that's a tricky intersection, it's a hallway, anyway, it's a pain in the butt.
Because they know better.
So, so that's gonna be key, you know, the traffic, it doesn't matter. Um, doesn't matter what it is, you know, you could have four cars pulling out, but they're pulling out from a different area than they normally would be, that wasn't there before.
I, that's what I'm saying, it is Saturdays, but we don't have separate hours.
You gotta do a traffic study, all that stuff, so that's gonna come out, and that's gonna show that.
We have the opportunity to say, you know what, no, you have to.
That was, that was existing.
A lot of places do at least eight AM on Saturdays, just to be considered.
You're doing a subdivision, under...
Do eight days Saturdays to be considered, but they're, they're doing what they're saying.
One thing you gotta get comfortable with, I wish I had a copy of this.
But if, if they're working well past six, then that's that.
Dina, okay, you're building a subdivision where there wasn't anything. Okay. This is a subdivision, doesn't matter if it's five houses, ten houses, or whatever. Okay. It's, if you wanna do a common driveway, and you have three hundred feet of front edge, then you need to talk to your engineer and come up with a new submission plan. But we don't do common drives anymore, but you can do a three-hundred-foot. However, under the plan you're submitting, under the plan you're submitting requires a traffic count, a max build-out account. It's all in the regulations, which you two have not read, I can tell from the last subdivision. The traffic. Okay. But your engineer has been in here for twenty years, maybe more. He knows this, and he should've briefed you guys on this. Okay. I noticed you're here and he's not here submitting this, okay? However, so just so you know, this is not a slam dunk. You are gonna have a traffic count, you're gonna have site distance issues, you're gonna have this other stuff, you need the max build-out and all stuff. We'll, I'm gonna look at the applications here, see what this is. You got two checks to write, to the town of Groveland, one sets up the engineering review, the other one sets up the application fee.
Now, why would it matter with common sense that this guy's got eight hundred cars coming in and out of here all day? This guy's got four hundred. I mean, why does Steve DeHulda, with two houses, matter? That I've been coming out of here all day?
Because you're the, you're the new guy.
National grid's coming out of there all day, there's nothing there.
Steve, Steve, because that's...
You got a red light here, you got a...
How long do you think that building's been there? Knight's Garage, give me a date, give me a date.
Fifty, fifty, I would go with, maybe forty.
Fifty years? Okay.
No, nineteen forty, what do you think?
Sure.
Okay. So he's, he's what you call a pre-existing, pre-existing, but when he went in there, there wasn't a lot of stuff in there.
Church parking lot, how about that? Did they have that studied now?
It's a parking lot.
They must already have it. Yeah, they had a hundred cars parked here, they had so many parking lots.
If you come in, Steve, Steve...
Why does it not matter that this is a certain cir- circumstance? Why do you wanna just play, oh, suddenly I'm putting eight lots in it, there's one little spot?
Dude, dude, you didn't read the reg.
The reg, that needs to be changed, like, you gotta have common sense, is what I'm saying, the regs, who gets it? The regs. They have two houses here.
Two houses with four cars coming out into a street that's got fourteen thousand cars and major accidents at an intersection, you, you need a traffic study, period. That's it.
Common, why do they call it common?
Three hundred feet, you need three hundred feet of front edge.
So the roadway, and you're, according to this, he has it at two eighty-five, so there's a good chance that he could squeeze a little further.
So you're saying if we put a common drive-in that was three hundred feet long, you can do a common drive-in?
And call it a single-lot subdivision instead of a two-lot subdivision and go?
Why would we tell that you can't do a common driveway?
That's what we were told.
It's, it's gonna be called something else, but it's not a common drive, a common drives were eliminated.
No, we weren't doing those anymore.
So, it's a single-lot subdivision. That's right, we're not doing this.
We're not doing those anymore.
That's what we said.
It's a subdivision, that's all.
Look, this is, you're trying to do work your engineer is supposed to do?
Well, that's fine, I don't mind. You know, I'm trying to do work that nobody wants to do. Nobody wants it. Electricians don't wanna do it, plumbers don't wanna do it, tile guys don't wanna do it, have a forage, and after maybe I...
You need three hundred feet of front edge, one hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
Okay. Of front edge, because you don't have it along the same street.
All right, all right, come on.
So you have to build it.
Right, like a driveway.
It's a little more than a driveway, because you don't have, but basically...
Did we get all the paperwork accepted?
No, that's what I'm trying to find out, by that jumping in on questions to make sure that we have the other stuff.
Is that something different than, is there a different way we could've approached this all on us?
I don't know what you got here. You, you just walked in with this. So, so I'm trying to see if this paperwork is right, so we can accept it in and get it to the engineers.
If you had three hundred feet, did you hear what you said?
And you missed a step.
They don't do it anymore.
You missed a step. If you had come in with a conceptual plan, which is, which is one or two pages max, on a conceptual plan, we could've had all kinds of discussion with you on this. And that would've been five hundred dollars to kick it out to the engineer review, and it would've highlighted all the regulations and stuff that you would've had to comply with. So now you jump to the preliminary stuff, which is fine. Okay. So now this is going out for review.
Right.
Okay. And so then you're gonna get a list back of all the stuff that, that are gonna be issues, whatever, what's gotta be done, et cetera, et cetera, the max build-out, expect that, and this, and that, and they said like that. And then we go through all the whole, the whole hearing stage. My, my question is, does this guy know this is going in?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
There's nobody there yet.
Well, okay. Well, obviously now they're gonna see it, but anyway, so that, that was, because we just had a neighbor in here that, he bought a house, had no idea, and next thing you know, they're taking out twenty-eight thousand yards of sand in this street, and all of his trees. Okay. So let's see.
Yeah, and, well, I'm almost positive that they took out some of his trees, because I'm pretty sure that, that's how that was supposed to be, but...
Okay. So we got a Form B. Access letter. It appears, in first glance, that the Form B preliminary application is complete with access for the board, across the land, the deed to the property, surveyor certificate, landowners. Actually, I'm not seeing the surveyor certificate. He's missing a form. Yeah.
So we would take a town vote to get a, a two lots out of one driveway, or a, a common driveway? Like, why, why, who had the authority to shut that on?